Okay, good morning, everyone, and welcome to City Hall and to Council Chambers. Thank you for joining us today. This morning, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and I would like to invite Reverend Claude Axel from Mount Pilgrim Baptist Church to lead us in the invocation.
Shall we pray at this time? Eternal God, once again, how excellent is your great name? And, oh God, we realize how worthy that your name is to be Revered. Would ask now, Heavenly Father, that you will bless this city council meeting. Bless our mayor and fellow council members. We pray for all city officials and staff members. Would ask now, Heavenly Father, that you will lead and guide and direct this meeting in the manner in which it should be held. Thank you for the opportunities that we have in terms of our freedom, our justice, and our rights to be able to speak for what we believe in. Bless, God bless America. Bless our president and all of the members in our Congress. Move from the national to the state as well as to the local. It is in the mighty name of Jesus that we ask this prayer, and we say amen.
Thank you, Reverend. In our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the Texas state flag, will be led by Chloe Delgado. She is a ninth grader at London High School, probably the best cheerleader on the squad, and she's a 4-H member of, or she's a member of the 4-H club.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one say, under God, indivisible.
Thank you, Chloe.
Thank you.
Yes. Ms. Werdah, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Paulette Juárdoh.
Present.
Councilmembers Roland Barera.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Here.
Gil Hernández.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pusley.
Everett Roy.
Here.
Dan Suckley.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City Attorney Miles Risley. Mayor and Council, decorum of the council, and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Great, thank you, Ms. Werdah. We'll go to Section E, our city manager's comments and update on city operations. Mr. Zanoni.
Okay, good morning, Mayor, and members of the council. We do have a couple items to brief you on this morning, but I am going to begin with a staff announcement, and we're happy to announce we have filled our final Assistant Director in Public Works. We know that Public Works with our street maintenance is one of our most important areas of focus in this city, and recently, we finalized a recruitment for the Assistant Director who will oversee the operations crews, our teams that are out there repaving our streets. And this is a gentleman right here, Manuel Hernandez.
Ah.
Yes, and let me just give you some background, and then he's going to say a few words as well. So on Monday, June 19th, about a month ago, I did appoint Manuel as the Assistant Director of Public Works. Manuel has over 20 years of civil construction experience, six of which were with the city of Corpus Christi back in the day, where he was the lead inspector for the city's engineering department. Most of Manuel's civil construction experience has been in Corpus Christi and the coastal bend, so this is his home, and he's real familiar with the region. Most recently, Manuel was with Bay Limited, and so this is a good news story, because usually, Bay and other big companies are taking our employees. So in this case, Manuel wanted to work for the city, and he recognized how much our Public Works Department is moving forward, and had a pretty good position in Bay, but said, "I think my career is right here with the city of Corpus Christi," so we're happy to say that. We know that Bay is a very important partner in the community with us, and we hate to take their employees, but we're glad Manuel's here. When he was with Bay, he operated in construction operations, and he was responsible for overseeing construction work that was done in the area with Bay crews, as well as improving processes and value engineering their processes to lower costs and to increase productivity, something we're very much interested in doing here in this city. Manuel was responsible for drawings and specifications to determine scope of work and develop project costs. During his tenure with Bay, when he did cost estimating, he was able to win 11 major projects for Bay totaling just under 70 million. So he knows about getting projects scheduled, costs estimated, and put under construction. Manuel has an Associate of Applied Science from the College Art Institute of Houston, and he's a Certified Construction Manager through Construction Management Association of America. So Manuel's here, he just wants to say a few words to the council and the community.
Thank you.
And we're glad he's here, and Ernesto is glad he's here as well, our director.
Good morning, and thank you for that introduction, Mayor and council. I'd like to begin by thanking City Manager Peter Zanoni for giving me this opportunity, and I'm honored to serve as the new Assistant Director for the Public Works Department. I was born and raised here in Corpus Christi, graduated from Moody High School, went to Delmar for a little bit before I transferred out to the Art Institute of Houston.
I went to Delmar.
Yeah, and I studied website design and multimedia, and at that time, there was a dot-com burst, and I was kind of stuck figuring out things, and so I reverted back to the construction industry for some stability. I was born and raised here in Corpus Christi, you know, and prior to starting for the city of Corpus Christi, I worked in the private sector for 20 years. Previously worked, like Mr. Zanoni was saying, for six years as augmented staff inspector in the engineering department. It was then that I really got like a true understanding and sense of what it is to work for a government entity. Over the years, I learned that I have a passion for building roads and infrastructure. I've had many roles in project building teams, and I'd like to share that experience and knowledge with the department, so we can find continued success in the programs that they've implemented. I'm proud to be here, part of the city of Corpus Christi and the Public Works leadership team. I'm here to serve the community and the people of Corpus Christi, and I look forward to working with the team to make our city streets better.
Awesome.
Good job, Manuel.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for speaking with us this morning.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, our next item, Mayor and council, is another presentation. In this case, it'll be by Financial Advisor Victor Kiriyoga, and from Specialized Public Finance. Victor and his partner Dan were very successful in helping this city issue debt recently that the city council approved the issuance of to include GO bonds and utility revenue bonds for our water wastewater system. We're extremely impressed by Victor and Dan and the excellent customer service that you've given us. These guys have gone above and beyond, all the way through in our rating agency presentations to working at the sale of the bonds and helping us along. So I want to personally thank you, Victor, for the great level of service you've given us. We're not accustomed to it, frankly, and so it's been a great surprise, but a great realization that we picked the right firm to help the city in our financial matters. So Victor's going to talk to us about the bond rating and the recent bond sales to give this council the perspective of what we did. Victor?
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of council, Mr. Zanoni, thank you for having me here this morning. For the record, my name is Victor Kiriyoga with Specialized Public Finance, and we have the honor of representing the city as your new financial advisors, as Mr. Zanoni indicated. We're here to give you a brief presentation regarding the financings that were conducted for this current fiscal year that we're in and about to wrap up. Everything went really well, and just wanted to report to you the very great results that the city, your taxpayers and ratepayers, were able to achieve on your financings to address some of your capital improvements. To start off this brief presentation, just to give you an overview of what entailed these financings for this year, back in April 11th, we provided the city council with a financing plan presentation to get your authorization and approval to allow myself and staff to start moving forward with various offering documents for the issuance of five transactions in the amount of $168,250,000. Four of those transactions are GO-backed or GO-supported. There was a general obligation bond that was previously voted, two certificates of obligations, one tax note, and then the fifth transaction was a utility system revenue bond that was supported by your water and wastewater system. We presented a plan to you, and we anticipated entering the market for the GO-supported bonds on June 21st, and then followed that up with a utility system revenue issuance on June 29th. The GO bonds closed successfully last week, and the utility system revenue bonds are scheduled to close successfully here on Thursday. Before we actually go into the market, there's a big run-up of offering document preparation, a lot of preparation by staff, all with the intent to try and put the city and your taxpayers in the best light, so we could get the best financing and best interest rate for you as we go out into the market. One of those steps is that we visit with the three rating agencies, and these are independent bodies that provide an independent credit analysis for the benefit of the bondholders to determine if it's a credit-worthy issuance and credit-worthy issuer to invest their bond funds with. And so we visit with Standard and Poor's, Moody's, and Fitch, and so this graph shows you the scale that they use to rate cities. And the city of Corpus Christi is considered a high-grade, high-quality bond issuer in the market. You can see there on the blue column there, blue row, that is your rating for your general obligation-backed bonds. That's at a double A straight-through from each rating agency. The one in the maroon, just one notch below, the double A minus category, is your utility system rating. And so this is fairly typical for cities to have one-notch difference between your general obligation-supported debt, which is property taxes, and then also your utility system. So all to say that the city continues to do a wonderful job. We like to see this in that all three rating agencies are in unison in terms of how they view the city and your creditworthiness. And so just to summarize some of the reflections that they had on the city, and the reason why they maintained your strong rating throughout for your credit, were a few things, and this is just a summary of various reports that they provided to bond investors. The first thing is that they anticipate the continued economic growth that the city is going through. They were very impressed with the city's very strong financial policies and practices. You all do a good job of being conservative when you budget. You have a long-term capital planning that you conduct, and you have a strong institutional framework as well. They also made note that the city consistently produces positive operating results with respect to your financials. It's always a good thing. And this time around, they really ran out of their way to inform us that they were very impressed with the city staff. And I'm not just saying this just because they're right behind me, but one of the things that we advise when we're newly engaged as your financial advisor is to bring all the rating agencies onsite to visit with us one-on-one instead of Zoom or over phone call, which is pretty typical for Texas cities. We also recommended and advised to the city that they produce a short video explaining all the good things that are happening here in the city and in the region. And the rating agencies were quite impressed with that video production that was done, not by us, we just recommended that video, but by the city. They did a wonderful job. In fact, the rating analyst said that, you know, they originally thought it was like an economic development video that the staff produced and shows to various entities that are thinking about moving to the city, but in fact, this is specifically prepared for the city. It's about 20-minute-long video that the city just did a wonderful job. I kind of got goosebumps when it first started, and it has a great opening and everything, so hopefully, the council has an opportunity to see it in the future. But again, they did comment on the strong management team that you have here in place at the city of Corpus Christi. So everything went well with the ratings. They affirmed all the ratings for the city. One other new thing that we advise as your new financial advisors is that because you're a high-credit rating issuer, you have access to the market pretty easily as compared to other entities that aren't as rated as high as the city of Corpus Christi. And so one thing that we introduced that the city had not done before is you, we advise that you conduct a competitive sell method, where basically, you don't pre-select the underwriters you work with, you just put it out there to bid, and whoever provides you the lowest interest rate on that particular bond transaction will be awarded the bonds. That was something new that was conducted by the city. So that was done for the four bond issuances that was supported by your general obligation securities. This also showed very good news. The interest rates were below budget, and not only that, you could see on the chart there below, on June 21st, when we had these four bond issuances bid out, all the bond issuances had a high participation rate from investment banks throughout the country. For the four transactions that the city sold on June 21st, you were able to generate 39 bids from various institutions throughout the country. So that's a very good mark. Whenever you're in a double-digit for one bond issuance and you attract that many bidders, that means you're highly sought after, and your bond obligations are highly sought after. So we're excited to see this, because some of the participants were underwriters that had never participated in city of Corpus Christi bonds before. So those interest rates for the tax-exempt components were in the 3.7, 3.67, and then the 3% interest rate range. Budgets were in about the 4% rate, so we're below budget there. Taxable was 5%, just because they don't have that tax-exempt benefit for that particular transaction. The fifth component that we sold, we utilized a negotiated sell method, because here, we were not only issuing bonds for, to address new capital needs for about $114 million for Corpus Christi Water, but we also conducted two different financings or refinancings. So basically, this handled two things, this utility system revenue bond. The first thing is that we generated $114 million for new projects, and then we also refinanced a little over $32 million of outstanding debt, all for the purpose of achieving interest cost savings. We did not restructure this debt, we didn't extend the final term. All we did was change the higher interest rate for a lower interest rate, and what the city was able to achieve was you were able to achieve for your ratepayers a little over $2 million in interest cost savings that you, that is foregone and saved for your ratepayers. To summarize, again, everything went really well. I'm really glad to report that we had a successful bond sale, especially the competitive sell. We generated a lot of interest from banks throughout the country. Everything went really well, generated 39 bids. Negotiated sell method for the utility system was also a success, and we got an interest rate of about 4.09% for that 30-year bond on the utility system. All the rates were below our estimates and our budgets, and again, this is all due to the wonderful decisions that the council's been making and the administration's been making with respect to your financials. They really applauded the city for being in such a well-placed situation, and whenever we issue bonds, it's always good, because it makes our jobs a lot easier. The pages behind that, it's just more detail about the specific bids, who actually bid on those bonds, but I really appreciate of the opportunity to be here in front of you, be a part of the city team, and just want to thank you for the opportunity, and congratulations on the successful bond issuance.
Thank you, Victor, and we do have a couple of comments. Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't have any questions, but I do want to compliment, so I've been here for a long time, and a few of us have, and back in the day when we were struggling a little bit more than we are now, we were on the border of hitting a triple B rating, and it was thanks to our wonderful finance team that pulled us out of it. Our CFO, Constance Sanchez, helped us, along with Eddie Houlihan, and many, many, many more. And it was actually, this was a huge deal back in, back then. I don't know if anyone remembers it. We can't, I can't even remember what I ate for lunch this morning, breakfast. Oh, that's right, I ate your taco. But that was one of the reasons Mr. Zanoni was so attractive to our city. We needed financial leadership, and we got it. So thank you to you and your team and the council, who's made excellent decisions since we've been up here, and I really respect y'all. I just want to say I appreciate being a part of this group, because this is a really big deal compared to where we were. And I think with all the bankers we have on council now, we'll be in good shape in the future. So thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Great job.
Thank you.
Councilman Pusley.
Thank you, Mayor. And to go along with what Councilman Hunter's saying, it's extremely, your bond rating is extremely important. You don't realize how important that is when you're trying to conduct business at a city, county, school district, or whatever, because if you have a poor bond rating, it makes things a lot more difficult. It costs you more money to borrow money. So anyway, I want to congratulate Peter and his staff, and Constance and her staff, and everybody for all the hard work putting this together. My question is, Victor, if you go back to page two, where it shows our current bond ratings, and Peter likes to compare us with our counterparts across the state of Texas, so how do we rank compared to, say, the seven cities larger than us, or maybe the cities grouped around us in forest size with respect to bond ratings?
With respect to bond ratings, you're up there with the seven cities. There are, you know, like the city of San Antonio, they're naturally, not naturally, they worked hard also to get to that AAA category, but that's pretty rare to be a city at that level. There's only, of the seven, there's only a couple that are actually at that level. Others are in the same range as we are there in the double A category. Anytime you're in this double A category, which is the second, third, and fourth row here, that means y'all are doing a good job. It's going to make it easier for y'all to access the market.
Yeah, okay, very good. Thank you, thank you, Peter.
Peter, thank you. Victor, thank you for being here. You've been extremely accessible since you came on board, and you have obviously been a very great addition to the team, and of course, to Constance and her team. Peter, thank you for your leadership in all of this.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Victor. Yeah, we appreciate it. And councilmembers, thank you for your comments. Mayor, we do have two other items, but you'll probably break for a citizen comment.
Yes, yes. Let's break for a public comment, and then we'll come right back and finish those two items. So that means we go to Section F, and that is our public comment. Mr. Risley, would you please recite the decorum rules?
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation, and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you. So before, no, I'm sorry, we did that part. Individuals will be called upon in order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comment will be taken first, followed by virtual public comment. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents. And for those commenting in person, I'd like to remind everyone that a recording is being made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone located here at the podium. State your name and address prior to speaking. There are two opportunities in which you can make public comment on an agenda item. The first is at the present time, and the second is at the time in which we actually hear the item. So please choose one. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes. Non-resident comments are limited to one minute. And for those commenting in person, there is a timer underneath the base of the microphone. It will let you know exactly how much time you have left to speak once the buzzer goes off. If you will please complete your comment or sentence, it would be muchly appreciated. If you have a petition or any information that you would like the council to have, if you'll please give it to the city secretary for distribution, and then proceed to the podium. So with that, we will start with Mr. Stephen Klepper. And if, let's see, John Hendricks, Sam Smith, Sean Flanagan, Alberto Carillo, if you could all please come to the front row, to my left, front row, would be much appreciative of that. Thank you. Okay. Do they know to turn them on? Oh, okay.
Mayor, it's going to be about 30 seconds or so before it's available, the part point. So staff needs a little time to bring it up. I don't know if you want to...
Do you want to...
I can go ahead and start.
Okay. You want to go and start?
Yeah.
Okay. Sure.
Mayor and council, Steve Klepper, 317 Sunset Avenue. Tomorrow at 2:30, the city manager is going to give you a briefing on water rates in response to Councilman Pusley's request back in May. And so I thought today, and I prepared for you a briefing on the briefing, a pre-brief, a cliff note sort of thing, for what you need to look for and think about and remember. And the biggest item that I want to remind you of is the big bold there. Water charges should be recovered from classes of customers in proportion to the cost of serving those customers. That's cost of service. That's the main thing to keep in mind before getting mired in details of arithmetic and different things. Keep that in mind. And keep that in mind, for example, if, when you look at residential inside rates, and you notice the volume charge is 50% more than for those that live outside the city, you say, wow, is that based on cost? What is that based on? Why is that? And does that make sense? When you open up, you'll see I've given this to you before, but I've copied the scope of work for the current contract, and there's a lot of good information in there, a lot of good things to think about. At the top, it says, what are the objectives of your rate design? Think about that as you look, as you think through water rates. At the bottom left, so when you look at cost of service, there's two ways, lots of ways, two ways to look at it. As a whole, is the city recovering all of its costs, and is it, is it receiving more or less, and then within each rate class? And that's what I have on the bottom right there. I'll skip the middle page. You can read it pretty clearly, except for the fact I want to point out on page, yeah, that's a good slide there. I copied the budget briefing that you did, that the city manager did. Look at all the items that have to do with utility rates, and think about how much time has been spent, or not spent, on that topic. Very important issue, and I'm glad the city manager is doing the briefing, as Councilman requested. On the last page, page, next page, is a list of lots of questions, and I could have written a lot more, but I tried to keep this to four pages. So I appreciate it, and thank you, and I look forward to the briefing tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Klepper.
Madam Mayor, can I just, just do two things? One, just to correct for the record, and so the public is aware, it's not, tomorrow's briefing is not on rates, it's on the structure, how we, it's the methodology and kind of the structure of the, of the rate system. So we won't be talking financials tomorrow, because they're still being finalized. That'll be presented next Tuesday with the city manager's budget, and then we'll have another workshop with the water, wastewater staff on the rates, on the actual rates. So tomorrow's on kind of the rate structure, water utilization by classification, cost recovery, that type of thing, for three of our rates, water, wastewater, and stormwater. And I did personally invite Mr. Klepper, and I'm glad he'll be here tomorrow. We wanted to make sure he was aware of the, of the workshop at the city council.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter. John Hendricks.
Madam Mayor, I see that what I was going to address, cemeteries is on the agenda, so I want to hold fire and not waste everyone's time.
Okay, and we'll be right back to that item after public comment. Thank you, sir. Sam Smith.
Sam Smith, 14313 dorsal. Wanted to talk a little bit about brain drain here in Corpus Christi, and as well, kind of a tie-in to our kiteboarding community. So it's been brought to my attention that there's... So, it's been brought to my attention that there's a brain drain that we have currently going on here in Corpus. Some of our smartest high school kids, they go off to UT, A&amp;M, really, they never come back. So, I guess, a little bit about me. I was born, raised here in Corpus, went to Flower Bluff High School, graduated there, went out of state, graduated out of state, and now I'm doing grad school, out of state, New Orleans, Tulane Med School, you know, did the whole thing. I'm in my last year of med school now, decided to do all my clinical rotations here, spawn shoreline, Bay Area, really just want to come back here. And why's that? Why do I want to come back here? Kiteboarding, that's the main reason. And really, we have the best kiteboarding here in the United States, and it's not even close. Yeah, so there's really not much stopping me from going other places, and I have these options, because I'm in my last year of medical school. We apply everywhere. But I want to come here for the wind, for kiteboarding, and to be close to my family again. And yeah, I think, really, it's come full circle with me, because I can be in a place where I'm doing the sport I love, I can be with my family here, and be serving my community that I grew up in. So, you know, that's, yeah, it just makes me happy that I can be in a place like that. And stories like me, physicians coming back here to Corpus Christi, really is not going to continue, you know, I know another half dozen doctors here that specifically moved here to kiteboard. That's not going to continue if we don't have public launch spots for kite surfing. In my eight years kite surfing, I've seen a spot at Flower Bluff get closed down, I've seen land disputes at Oso shut that spot down, and I've seen a spot between the island and Porte get shut down. And right now, we don't currently have any public launch spots. So, really, I think Francisco's talked a little bit in the past with y'all about this. Our community is really poor advocating for ourselves, so he's really kind of got this organized and behind it, and he can speak more to logistics and stuff like that. I just wanted to tell my story. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Sean Flanagan.
My name is Sean Flanagan. I live at 4218 Herndon Street. I want to congratulate you all on the news on that AAA bond. I mean, that's huge. That's really, really good. Well done. It's nice to hear good news sometimes. Hey, I want to keep in mind of that, we don't want to make, with the good news, we don't want to make a bad move. And a bad move would be to fund or create a Department of Environmental Sustainability. I base that thought and analysis on an analysis of San Antonio's department, which is no longer called the Department of Environmental Sustainability, and San Antonio is called the Department of Sustainability. If you go to their website, take a good look at what's there, I think you're going to end up with a couple thoughts, and so let me give you a couple thoughts. The concept of environmental sustainability departments not defined or explained. This is because such a department would be a policymaking department usurping the mandate of the elected officials I'm looking at right now to make policy decisions. Second, if you listen to the public comments of the proponents of a Department of Environmental Sustainability, it will address an extremely wide range of problems. The logical outcome of such a broad mission is that such a department will infringe on every other department in the city. If your concept of a mission is, quote, "the environmental sustainability of the city," unquote, such a department can claim almost any activity in the city falls within its purview. Last reason, in San, I mean, rather, in Corpus Christi, we've got good financial news. However, in the last five years, we've added 600 non-fire, non-police, over 600, non-personnel, or non-fire, non-police personnel to our budget, to our roles. We've also, in the last 10 years, increased our budget from 700 million to 101.4 billion. Those growth rates dwarf the growth rate of the population of Corpus Christi. My thought to you all is, A, you certainly don't need an environmental sustainability department, which will retard the economic growth of this city. If you want to keep the good economic news coming, you do not need another layer of bureaucracy added, and that's why I'm coming out against this. It's not a good idea, and it won't be ever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flanagan. Alberto Carrillo.
Good afternoon. Young man, if you're still here, can I give you my daughter's telephone number? Trying to get her back to Corpus. She's also in medicine, in the medical field. Okay. All right. Alberto Carrillo, 4055 Calormet Drive. Basically, following on Mr. Flanagan's discussion, today I'd like to raise four points of concern regarding this initiative. Number one, the high cost involved. One major disadvantage of sustainable development is that it will be expensive. The initial investment required to implement sustainable practices such as green infrastructure and renewable energy will come at a very, very high cost for our residents. This inevitably will deter many businesses and individuals from adopting this practice. Number two, slow progress, guys, and I mean slow. Sustainable development is a long-term process that requires significant time and resources. This means that progress can be slow and incremental, which will be frustrating for those who want to see immediate results. Fragile commitment. Sustainable development requires that businesses and local government involved in the building process must be committed to using only environmentally friendly materials. This requirement without doubt will be difficult for residents and businesses to agree with this type of approach. Number four, and this is probably the biggest one that I've been talking to folks around the country, criticism for being too idealistic or impractical. Sustainable development is often criticized for being too idealistic or impractical, or not having enough focus on profit motives, profit motives, or true economic growth for our city. And it's why, and unless convinced otherwise, prove me wrong, that's fine. As a taxpayer, at this time, I say no towards the development of this department. Thank you, guys, and God bless you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. LeAnn Wheatley. Yes. And then we have Daniel Restley, Amanda Guerra, Alice Bustos, and Rachel Caballero. If you can all make your way to the front here, that would be great. Do we have Daniel Restley? Is Daniel here? Yes, sir. Amanda Guerra, Alice Bustos, Rachel Caballero. Thank you, Ms. Wheatley. Go ahead.
I just want to second what has been said by...
Can you, I'm sorry, can you state your name and your address?
Yeah, it's LeAnn Wheatley, 2314 Greer Drive in Flower Bluff. And I want to second what these gentlemen have said about the Department of Sustainability. I agree wholeheartedly. It is too soon and is not necessary at this time. The money could be much better spent on many other departments in the city that need more money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wheatley. Daniel Restley.
My name is Daniel Restley. I live at 2313 Louisville Drive here in Corpus Christi, out on the bluff. And I think I'd like to eventually refer all my public comments to Sean Flanagan, because he couldn't, I couldn't say any better myself. I am against the sustainability department. One, who's going to sustain the sustainability department is the taxpayer, and also creates just another level of bureaucracy that businesses and constituents have to overcome to further their business. And that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Restley. Amanda Guerra.
Yes, I would like to save my comment for when y'all discuss the municipal court findings.
Okay, for that item?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Alice Bustos? Is Alice Bustos here? No. Rachel Caballero.
Mr. Pusley, Rachel Caballero, 522 Hancock. Fact, good afternoon, elected community representatives and taxpayer-paid employees. Fact, I'm here today to go on record, to bring delight the negligence of this council and city operations. While we, the people, are being fined for watering our lawns, over-usage of water, and being fined for water leaks, the city has lost $3 trillion, 117 million, 22,883 gallons of water due to maintenance negligence. That's $3 trillion, $3 trillions of gallons of water lost for the past two years during a drought due to the negligence of operations, even with 600-plus employees. These are your numbers coming from the community-issued pamphlets. Fact, we are all here to hold you to the standard of government that we expect for our community. This is not it. This is not how we want for things to be run or managed. We are a community of the people and for the community. We are not a community for industry. We are now being told that public comment will not be solicited during the water and wastewater rate structures discussions. Fact, why are the true rate pairs not being included in this conversation? Hasn't this council promised transparency? We've been telling the community that we, the community, are the minority users of water, of which some of you have spread lies that the numbers are not accurate. But here we have, in your own documentation, that industry uses 84% of our water while the community only uses 16%. Fact, we do not need the water. Industry needs the water to expand, and we refuse to allow corruption, to force us to pay for it, to take away our way of life here, and to turn us into an industrial dumping ground. Corruption, you say? Here are few names of businesses and corporations that some of you are receiving money from that is a complete conflict of interest, to which none of you have recused yourself from. ExxonMobil, EOG Resources, Fulton Construction. This is all fact. But we are supposed to believe that you represent the community? Some of you are looking for higher positions within our community. None of you are qualified, because you have yet to do right by this community in the current position that you hold. I'm asking for the resignations of Peter Zenoni and Mike Murphy due to absolute negligence and for failure to properly maintenance infrastructure and conserve water during a drought. This is not, this not only proves incompetence, but also the inability to do the job in which they were retained for. We are no longer settling for the status quo. We are no longer sitting back and waiting for y'all to do the right thing by us, the community. We are going to show up here every week until you hear us, or until we elect representatives that will replace you all. We will not reward corruption with advancement. Public comment will not go away. It is not a wasted time, and we will show up here, we will show up at commissioner's court, and we will show up on the hill to fight against corruption and to fight for this community.
Thank you, Ms. Caballero. Melissa Zamora. Jonathan Martinez, Sylvia Jimenez de la Garza, Ruckmini Zernetti, and John Weber. You'll please come forward. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Zamora.
My name is Melissa Zamora. I live on the 400 block of Louisiana in District Two. I'd like to, again, remind y'all to follow up with our heavy volume, heavy water volume users, the industrial users that use the majority of the water. Where is their drought contingency plan? Where is the water conservation plan that they promised you months ago? I'm going to leave, or start off where I left off a few weeks ago. When he, the rep from the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation, went on to say during a past city council meeting that the CCREDC needs to be more proactive in their approach to see what other opportunities are out there, I agree. But I do not agree with the current and past focus that is solely on growing the industrial complex. We need diversification, true diversification, and not just cop-outs for industry like the carbon and hydrogen hubs they are shoving down our throats. Why do we all, or what do we all need? Food, water, clean air, and a safe environment to thrive in. So, how about we start focusing and investing more in those things? Sustainable agriculture to localize more of our foods, drawing water in from condensation and humidity from the air? They're doing it in Arizona. Conserving wild spaces and preserving existing wetlands to serve as true carbon sinks and erosion control and storm barriers. True crime prevention plans, not just more reactions to crime. Healthcare investments of all kinds, and education, arts, and our parks. The possibilities are truly endless when we look beyond the fossil fuel industry to save us, as it is only killing us. Now, I would like to switch focus and call attention to how a Department of Sustainability in Corpus Christi can play a role in all of this. Not only can having a department like this bring in additional funding by the plethora of grants that are currently available right now, don't take my word for it, look it up. This department focuses, this department focus would take into consideration both the built and natural environment, helping create a social stability and equity while striving for a more livable community and a better quality of life for all, not just residents, but the planet as a whole. After all, healthier communities lead to lower healthcare costs through improved air and water quality. Now, who could argue with that? If the main opposition to this beautiful wave of progressive change our region so deeply needs is that we cannot afford it, I say we cannot afford not to invest in something like this, as the climate emergency we are all affected by is only getting worse if we continue to stand idle. And when I hear the naysayers mention how we already have city departments that can do all of these things, why isn't more being done? Maybe it's because the existing departments are already stretched so thin with the work that they were initially given, that anything extra is just too much to handle. As a local taxpayer, I would much rather have my hard-earned money go to developing a department like this, instead of going to lobbyists to speak on my behalf regarding desalination, which we all know is a horrible idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zamora. Jonathan Martinez.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Martinez. I reside at 5745 Skylark. I have one of these for each of y'all. Mr. Zenoni, I took yours, because I forgot my copy at work, so I'll give this to you later. But Project Hope is part of the Council of Landowners Foundation here, located at 2882 Holly Road. We are requesting a change in City Ordinance 031879, extending to all parks, rather than just Blucher Park, the prohibition of smoking in parks, right? And so, we've heard a lot of people talk today about Parks and Rec was here earlier, right, how we are like a product of our environment, right? So, Parks and Rec has been updating parks, renovating and things like that, adding changes, which is amazing. We want to, with these changes, try to implement this no smoking in parks, because we know that there's so many environmental hazards, behavior hazards and things like that, within our teens, within our youth, and whatnot. And if our teens, our youth are hanging out at these parks, and they're seeing people who are discarding their cigarettes, or discarding their vapes and whatnot, just on the ground, they're going to think it's okay to do those things as well, right? So, fact, nine out of 10 adults who smoke cigarettes daily try their first time smoking by the age of 18. Cigarette use at parks, we did a park cleanup back in April, where I told y'all last time, we had collected over 3,000 cigarette butts at these seven parks. We've been meeting with PrAC team members, Mr. Dodd as well, and he informed me that there are over 100 different parks and facilities that the city has. And so, I didn't think that there were that many. I thought there were like at least 20. And so, imagine how many cigarette butts are out there, how many vape pens, how many other things that we found at these parks that are just there, just from litter and whatnot. And so, smoking is currently banned on inside-city properties and whatnot. Currently, right now, smoking, or not smoking, alcohol consumption is banned at city parks. So, if we can ban alcohol consumption, why can we not ban cigarette smoke and litter and whatnot? And so, on the back of this page, you have things that support this no smoking in parks policy, if it's regarding litter, if it's regarding alcohol consumption already, if it's regarding who's going to implement this and whatnot. And so... And so, let's see, we know that secondhand smoke is a hazard, right? It can cause asthma, attacks can cause COPD. Right now, or we know that littering is unlawful, disposing of cigarettes. People, 75%, 75% of smokers admit to throwing away their cigarette butts just on the ground because it's just convenient, it's there. Why are we allowing this to happen when we know cigarette butts are litter? They're made of plastic, they don't biodegrade. And so, like I said, just implementing these things, not just at Bluetown Park, but at all parks around Corpus Christi, if it's signage and things like that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sylvia Jimenez de la Garza.
I wanted to put on this time, then you have, add more time because I'm not a native speaker and because I have a disability, but then you don't have it to add. That would be a suggestion to add up on your form to sign in for people who has disabilities like dyslexia, stutter, it would be a good thing to add up. Because it did had the prior time that I came, but this time they didn't have it to add it because I'm not a native speaker, even though I speak.
Okay.
Sorry. Even though I speak.
You do?
Well, not great, but I defend myself. My name is Sylvia Jimenez de la Garza, Sylvia Henderson for sure. I live in 3,000, Charlotte. I have been living in the Anaville section for the last 13 years in Calale, Anaville. I came over here just to ask, what was the timeframe of, what was the plan, Mr. Zanoni, for our area? I came over here showing pictures, how bad it was. We have 2021, our taxable values for our area was 3.7 billion. I wasn't able to get the new numbers, but we have a lot of money on our area. And this is what my kids, so if you see, do you think this is okay? We get, bring to the city 3.7 billion? Now it's probably like four, so I don't think it's okay. We have a lot of issues that have been addressed, infrastructure. Our area is going to grow because we have more industry coming. Either you like it or not, people doesn't like it, whatever. But our kids are the ones who's going to suffer. As an educator myself, I worry for them because this is kids that go with my kids to school, that have seen graduated, that I see getting out of Whataburger late at night, and they can easily get run over if they don't have proper lighting, if they don't have a good sidewalk. This is the people that I'm fighting for, and I'm not going to be a politician because I did it before at 18, didn't like it. So, here it is. This is the person that I'm fighting for. We need a sidewalks. You have a phone number, you have my phone number, you have my email. I haven't got any response from the city. This is what happened because our subdivisions, they're not properly planned, we don't have enough drainage. We pay for a storm drainage. Where's the fee? Where's the, where's the work? Where's the plan? I'm not an engineer, but I'm an accountant, and this is not, this is, this doesn't add up. If I pay for a fee, where's the service? Why is the subdivision where my kids' school is not draining? Why do I have to wait an hour until I have to get out? Because I don't want to get stuck in my truck from the school. Okay, this is the service that we get from the city. This one is, it was in front of HEB. It was like a medium light. It was there for two years. After two years, after I contacted Traffic Engineering, it was fixed because I was after them for six months, and I'm good at it. When I want something done, I get it done. And this is again from the TM Intermediate. This is the subdivision. This is the northwest. Right next to it, there's half a million-dollar houses, but they don't know they're going to these houses. And again, I'm sorry, but I know you're going to say, if you don't like it, you can move. Well, I'm Hispanic, I'm from here, and my family's from here. My actually grandfather has a monument outside.
Thank you, Ms. de la Garza.
De la Garza.
Yes, and we will notate your comment on.
And if you could please, somebody contact me. I really appreciate it because it's been like twice, and this will be my last time that I come. Just it seems like I'm just wasting my time.
Yeah. Yes, Peter, can we get our staff to get the more precise area that she's referencing, please? We'll get staff to do that, and like I said, in terms of the public comment form and being able to say that, you know, there's a disability, we'll go ahead and add that as well.
Right, yeah, our Public Works Director, Ernesto de la Garza. Ma'am, Ms. de la Garza is right there.
I'll meet with you.
Thank you, thanks for being there.
Okay. Mr. de la Garza, if you'll get with the district councilman afterwards with that information. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, just a statement of fact, many of the issues that Ms. de la Garza brings up are fact. I mean, they've existed in the Teloso Midway-Anaville area for years, and we've been screaming about that for a long time, and we have to make better do. The lack of sidewalks in that area is just reprehensible. So the city annexed that area, the city needs to provide the services. Thank you.
Yeah. So, I didn't know, okay, I didn't know Dan was coming on. Thank you. Thank you, Peter. Rick Mini, Sir Netti.
Hello, everyone. My name's Rick Mini-Sir Netti. I live at 7829 Lovain Drive. This past year, at my high school, Veterans Memorial, I started a nonprofit organization called Gen V Free. Our goal is to teach the next generation all about the dangers of vaping and how to help prevent youth vaping. I'm here before you today to talk about why vaping and smoking at any city park should be prohibited. As most of you know, vapes or e-cigarettes are toxic vices just like cigarettes. But what most don't know is that secondhand vaping is a thing too. The human brain doesn't fully develop till the age of 25, so when kids inhale these toxins, it decreases their ability to create new synapses or their ability to learn a new skill or harness a new memory. Children who are exposed to secondhand smoke are at increased risk for acute respiratory infections such as pneumonia, bronchitis, middle ear disease, more frequent and severe asthma, respiratory symptoms, and slowed lung growth, which are all, almost all the symptoms that someone who would smoke or use a cigarette would have to deal with. If you do not want your kids vaping or smoking because of the health dangers, then you shouldn't allow them to be around secondhand smoking either. These are all more reasons why vaping and smoking in parks should be prohibited. Big cities such as Austin, Dallas, Fort Worth, San Antonio, and San Francisco have already prohibited vaping and smoking in city parks. Another reason why vaping and smoking should be prohibited in parks is because of the dangers leftover pieces are to kids. You all know young kids love to put different things in their mouths. If your baby or toddler were to put a piece of a vape or cigarette in their mouth, it could be highly toxic, especially if they were to swallow it. Also, if your teen or preteen were to find a leftover cigarette or vape and end up trying it, it could create a new possible addiction from that. And finally, when you all were younger, did you enjoy going to the city parks around you? For me, that was one of my favorite things. I have memory, I have many fond memories of that. If we want our kids and future generations to create those sweet memories that we did, then we have to prohibit vaping and smoking in our city parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. John Weber.
John Weber, 6009 Naples Street. A quick class on how to fill out the ethics report. Next slide. This is where you fill out your name. This example is Councilman Pusley's report. Next slide. This page, you will fill out any license you hold. Next page. Part two, you list any businesses you are engaged or associated with. He lists the business, but neglects to list his position or title held as required. Part three, you list all sources of income over 10% of your gross income or $5,000. Thanks for leaving, Mr. Pusley. He lists Thomas products, but fails to list any other sources of income. It is assumed he is getting paid for his work by the council. I would also think he is receiving retirement income from EOG Resources after 35 years of service. He may also be collecting Social Security. Next slide. Part four, you list any businesses, organizations, held, owned, acquired, or stock having a value of over $5,000. He lists Thomas products, EOG Resources, and ExxonMobil. All his publicly traded stocks are in the oil and gas business, which is a very risky and undiversed way to invest. He has a large financial interest in the doing, in doing all he can to support these companies' operations. Next slide. SEC Form 10K, EOG Resources sold crude oil out of the Port of Corpus Christi. Next slide. EOG Resources supplement 2023. They plan to ship oil, gas, and LPG out of the Port of Corpus Christi. Next slide. An article addressing a new agreement for EOG Resources to sell 720,000 million BTUs of gas a day out of Corpus Christi Stage 3. Next slide. Approve a pipeline relocation agreement by and between EOG Resources, Inc., Maverick Terminals, Corpus LLC, and the Port of Corpus Christi Authority for the relocation of an existing EOG pipeline. Next slide. How can this councilman be trusted on appointments and other issues dealing with the port when we know so much of his personal investments are tied up in companies that the port is an essential part of their operations? As always, have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Weber. John Bradshaw. Then we have Chuck Burnett, Victoria Holland, Patricia Reinhardt, and Adam Rios. So is John, oh, you're John Bradshaw. Who, okay, you're John Bradshaw. Okay, thank you. No, John Bradshaw's first, yeah.
John Bradshaw, 2921 Airline Road, Honorable Mayor, Council Members. Thank you for your time. I'd like to give my comment on Agenda 19 at that time, but I might need to leave earlier than that, so I'll give it now. I'm here as an attorney who lives and works within Corpus Christi, but also as an attorney for CLEET, the Combined Law Enforcement Associations of Texas. I was here for the city marshals who alerted me to a possible reduction in force that the city may be contemplating, and I think that it might relate to Agenda 19. Most of my comments will be general, but I'm also somewhat referencing Judge Bull's report, and I have three major points that I'd like to get to quickly. So number one is, what is the purpose of the city marshal? So if the city is considering a reduction in force to totally eliminate the marshal program due to an expensive line item, I would advise you to understand that, you know, bringing in revenue is not the primary purpose of law enforcement in general. It's there to arrest or otherwise resolve cases that don't want to be resolved by other means, by clerks or kiosks, that the judge referenced. Overall, I think his report is great. I think everyone, including the marshals, support endeavors to increase efficacy, to increase case closures, to incorporate technology. But a reduction in force that would completely eliminate the city marshals, I don't think would accomplish those goals, and I think it would lead to a net negative across the entire city. The thing that we have to keep in mind is that these departments are intertwined, and so if you pull at a perceived inefficacy in one instance, you may create one in another. And I have a specific example I'd like to bring up by talking with the city marshals, which they may comment later on. One is which they often do transports for Corpus Christi police if the person that the Corpus Christi police officer is out on just has Class C warrants. Often, the city marshals will transport them and take care of that, which frees up the Corpus Christi police officer to handle more calls, which we all know is very important. I think that's something that's not brought out in Judge Bull's report nor in the municipal court report, and I think might bear consideration. Additionally, I think there are other options to a reduction in force that would give you the reduction in cost for the Marshals Department. And I think many of the proposed technological improvements and other streamlining measures in Judge Bull's reports would reach that goal. And so I would just caution the council to consider alternatives to a reduction in force. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bradshaw. Chuck Burnett.
My name is Chuck Burnett. I reside at 4429 Sutton Lane in Corpus Christi. And first of all, I want to extend my warmest greetings to the mayor and the entire city council, to our city manager, our secretary, and thank you very much for the time. I'm a lifelong citizen of Corpus Christi. I was born maybe a little over 30 years ago at Memorial Hospital. But I'm here today, serving in my capacity as the Secretary for the Republican Party of Neoces County, and I am also on the State Executive Board. I have a letter I'd like to read for our chairman, who's out of town. On July 11th, 2023, at the Neoces County Republican Party Executive Committee meeting, the executive committee voted unanimously to pass a resolution opposing a proposal to create and fund a Department of Sustainability. This resolution was passed in light of a current budget proposal by the Corpus Christi Mayor, City Manager, and several members of the city council to fund and create a so-called Department of Sustainability in an upcoming city budget. The proposed department will cost the city further tax dollars and duplicate existing initiatives to protect the environment. This budget proposal will simply create another department with unacceptable oversight over other city departments and entities and increase already intenable amounts of bureaucratic structures in the city government. The Neoces County Republican Party's unanimous passage of the resolution indicates the party's firm and strenuous opposition to wasteful government spending, further upending of balanced governmental powers, and additional and unnecessary bureaucracy in the Corpus Christi city government. Given the city's already inflating budget, the party condemns further attempts such as these to increase the budget and limit potential for economic growth in the city of Corpus Christi. That's the, a letter from our chairman. I share the sentiments also, and I respectfully ask everybody in the council, please consider these comments, the comments we heard in the similar light earlier, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Victoria Holland.
Hi there, happy to be here again. Thank you so much for your time. I am here not to echo the exact same sentiments that I have spouted, I guess, in the last few times. Y'all know my thoughts on the proposed Office of Sustainability very well, I think, by this point in time. And so I'm not going to reiterate what I have to say there. What I am going to say is that I want to encourage and applaud any areas where we can renew focus on maintenance, renew focus on really true sustainability, which is our resilience. There are certain things that are happening, and they're not going to change. EVs are coming, and they're going to be adopted more and more. They're also roughly at least about 33% heavier than regular cars. So for instance, I know that when we all look at creating new infrastructure, creating new roads, creating new pipes underneath those new roads, we use weight metrics, right? We all know that, we all do it. Well, we need to make sure that we're using weight metrics for the future. That assumes cars are going to be anywhere from 30 to 50% heavier. Our recycling. Our recycling plant right now is kind of at a point where we don't really recycle glass. We don't really recycle pizza boxes that have touched grease. We don't really recycle, but maybe a tiny fraction of any plastics. So I don't really think we're about to start recycling lithium batteries anytime soon at our plant. I don't really think that's in the cards. These aren't things the Sustainability Department could help with. A Sustainability Department could not address these issues, but we can here in this city. These are nuts and bolts, maintenance issues, creating simply a plan for what are we going to do? The batteries are coming, right? Individuals have the right to purchase their own vehicles of their choice. Do we have a plan for what we're going to do with them? Do we have a plan for the higher tonnage that we're going to see on our roads over our clay pipes? 90% of our city is clay pipe still for wastewater. So as we move forward, and I know that in this budget, it's probably kind of too late, too little for me to say this, but I really hope that as we're reviewing this budget, we're looking at what are we going to do that increases the resilience of our infrastructure projects and improve our ability to maintain these projects and actually have some audits, actually have some level of extra executive responsibility in these areas, because I think that truly, ladies and gentlemen, is what's going to set us up for success in the future. Down the road, if we're looking at this and we think there are more initiatives we would like to do to increase sustainability in the city, I think that actually having the infrastructure set will put us there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holland.
Hello, and thank you for allowing me to take a moment of your time. My name is Dr. Patricia Reinhardt, and I live at 317 Clifford Street, Corpus Christi, Texas. So this week, I received from Delmar Lawn View a message. It's a neighborhood messaging, and it said, I quote, "I need your opinion. Last night, we dined at Cheesecake Factory at about 8:45, when a big, real monster rat landed on this couple table, and the staff running behind the rat to take it out back, and far some people left the restaurant without paying. Some people, they returned the food. We just got the food, 10 family members, et cetera." So I have been here three or four times. I started doing this in February, and my concern has continued to be the, let's say, ad hoc disposal of food waste and other forms of waste within our community that are prob, this is probably the cause of the unsustainable conditions that we have here. I'd like to offer you a little taste of cheesecake. Is there anybody here who's a taker? Yummy! This would be delicious, and with the rat-dropping garnish, it'll be even better. So I'm continuing to lament this type of situation. Last time I came here, I was told that I had shown this before, and indeed, this is a brand-new picture. Once again, I am showing you the lack of sustainability in our community. I hope this is not acceptable to you. This is in the alleys behind the restaurants that you may enjoy, the food stores where you may purchase whatever it is that you enjoy cooking at home. But this is what I call unsustainable, and I really am hoping that I won't have to take the picture of this mess again and come up here and display it, because, you know, if I have to come in here again, I'm going to bring my hairbrush. And, you know, being a grandma, I'm telling you, this is just not going to cut it. We need to indeed support sustainability, because this type of behavior is unsustainable. It's a slap in your face and a slap in my face to have, and our children, to have this kind of thing going on within our community. I have interviewed people that run property management, and they have educated me on a lot of details about this. It's not that simple. It's really hard to do, but you can't just throw up your hands and give up. We have to start monitoring these dumpsters and demanding that they be closed at night and not be permitted to do this. Thank you very much. I'll be back with more cheesecake. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Reinhardt.
And that's why I support locally-owned and operated restaurants instead of chains. Adam Rios, 7301 Tangled Ridge Court, coming to you as a member of Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee and now newly appointed onto the Pedestrian and Bicycle Connectivity Subcommittee. I am here to talk about what I usually talk about and bring some positive light. There was, as reported by the Caller Times, there is a new skate park that has broken ground and is now rolling into Corpus Christi at our city's West Guth. You know, I always called it West Guth, then somebody said, no, it's West Guth. So I'm going to keep calling it West Guth if that's all right. I don't mean...
I say Guth.
See, apples, oranges. Either way, it's located a little further inland and is now going to be our city's third skate park. Currently, we do have the Cole Park Skate Park, which is right off Ocean Drive, off our beautiful bayfront. We've got the Ranowski Park in Flower Bluff, which I'd like to see maybe expanded a little more, maybe not much more, but probably a little more shade. And the hydration station there could probably use a little bit of work, but it's still there, and now we've got this third one going. But what I'm excited about this, and what a lot of other skaters are excited about, is the conceptual design. And it's further inland, so this creates a great opportunity for kids who live in the northwest area. But the concept is a little more reflective of where skateboarding is at this point, both competitively and where we're going in the future with skateboarding. And again, the location, it being inland, is now creating an opportunity for kids all over the coastal bend to have a place to go and skate safely. The opportunity this creates for kids pushes them further in what could become a career, I believe, in skateboarding. If you're not familiar with the concept or the design, it's very similar to a park that I was harping about in a positive way called House Park in Austin. I skated that park for 20 years. My son grew up skating there. And to see a park of that caliber already broken ground here in Corpus Christi, it's pretty exciting. There was a comment that was made, I don't know, about a month ago, and I had a little bit of a problem with the comment, where somebody was like, oh, well, you're going to build another skate park, and why are we building more skate parks and not focusing on this other sport or this other cause? And I just thought, you know, because it's affordable and it's accessible and it's financially achievable and attainable by kids to know that they can do a sport that, from start to finish, only costs a couple hundred dollars. So of course, I'll advocate for that. Somebody wants to push a sport that, on a socioeconomic level, costs $5,000 to start, cool, let them do what we did and keep coming down here and advocate for it. I am so into the community, and we were talking about brain drain earlier. I'm one of those people who left but came back, and I am, aside from many other things that I do, launching my own skateboard branding company, and I'm doing it here in town. And I'm doing it in District 5. Anyway, just thought I'd bring some positive light, and I don't know how much more research needs to be done, but at some point in time, you're going to be voting on the smoking ban in public parks, and I just think if it's going to be near kids, I'm kind of in favor of these kids who want to keep smoking out of our skate parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rios.
Howdy. Good morning, folks. My name is Armon Alex. I live at 78417 1610 La Jolla Street and District 3. I've been a lifelong resident of Corpus Christi. I graduated from Moody High School, from their Innovation Academy, and attended A&amp;M Corpus Christi to pursue a degree in environmental science. For the past year, I have urged this council to take action on the pressing issues facing our city and to prepare for the impacts of our climate crisis. We have worked tirelessly with the city manager's office advocating for the investment in environmental sustainability staffing, providing case study after case study and evidence after evidence in its support. As a young, educated professional, I have dedicated my education and my career to understanding our natural systems and the urgent need for action. I have immersed myself in the overwhelming evidence, the data, and have traveled the world to understand the consensus among experts. Our scientific community has spoken loud and clear, and as the youngest adult in a room full of grown adults, let me proudly proclaim again that the climate crisis is real. It is happening now, and it requires our immediate attention, and it is up to our communities to prepare for the impacts of this crisis. It is highly unfortunate that in our midst there are those who may subscribe to some far-right conspiracy theories and may blindly deny their overwhelming evidence, but I stand here today to tell you that their denial will not deter our efforts, nor will it deter countless others who are fighting for our healthier city, for our future, and for the well-being of our planet. While I would be disappointed if this council chooses inaction, chooses to align with conspiracy and fear-mongering, I want to assure you all that my commitment and determination to address our environmental challenges will not waver. We will continue to advocate for sustainable practices, for climate resilience, and the protection of our natural resources. We will continue to collaborate with organizations here in our city and engage with our community to create positive change. Regardless of the decisions made in this chamber, the stark evidence and reality remains. Climate change is impacting our city. It is impacting our residents, and it is impacting our ecosystems. We still have an opportunity to be leaders here, to embrace innovation, and to create a sustainable and resilient city that we can all be proud of. I implore you to consider the overwhelming scientific consensus, the data, and the urgent calls from experts who warn us of the consequences of inaction. I will urge you again, in some capacity, to prioritize climate resilience and to take bold steps towards a healthier future. And I will leave you with this profound indigenous knowledge. We do not inherit the earth and our resources from our ancestors. We borrow it from our children and future generations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alex.
And then we have Pamela Woods, and that will conclude our public comment. My name is Kimberly Cook. I live at 4718 Mars Hill Drive. I have lived on the south side of Oso Creek for over 30 years. I spend a lot of time in my backyard and have noticed over the years a steady decline of birds, both in numbers and variety of species. Years ago, I had a friend who would call me to tell me when a flock was flying overhead. Today, those flocks are very few and far between. This observation gave me pause when I recently saw what had been three beautiful old trees chopped down at Staples and Park Avenue. This gave me pause, especially because I was so impressed with the initiatives and partnerships regarding trees instigated by this city council, by you. The Community CC partnership with TXU Energy and the Texas Trees Foundation is wow. Knowing trees have this much support made me wonder what our city is doing to protect existing trees. I have asked, I have researched, but I cannot see that there is anything being done. Maybe the trees at Staples and Park Avenue were diseased or damaged or damaging property, I don't know, but these trees were old, they provided beautiful shade that cooled that street. The city is considering a Sustainability Department. This is a great idea that many city, Texas cities, have already implemented. Yes, protect our trees, protect our birds, protect the coastal bend. With our delicate ecological system and the proximity of industrial operations to that environment, I believe we must have an educated staff knowledgeable in sustaining our green spaces, our estuaries, our bay. An environmental expert working in conjunction with our park system and our community, I believe, can improve the habitat that migratory birds need to thrive. Eco-tourism is an untapped resource in this city. Through habitat preservation and improvements, planting of bird and pollinator-attractive native plants and trees, we can be, continue to be known as a birding destination. From my understanding, there is an untapped wealth of volunteers and bird-friendly organizations in Corpus Christi that could be leveraged through a coordinated sustainability effort. My hope is that we, as a community, could help reverse declining bird populations and increase eco-tourism, all while protecting the trees we have in Corpus Christi. I have given you a handout regarding Bird City Texas, Port Duranzas, Bassdrop, Dallas, Houston, Galveston, San Antonio, and Surfside Beach are all certified Bird City Texas participants. I believe this is an organization worthy of our attention if we, as a community, are serious about sustaining our birdiest city in Texas designation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Pamela Woods? Is Pamela Woods here?
She's on WebEx, Mayor, just what?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yes, she is. Thank you.
Hello, how are y'all? My name is Pamela Woods, and I live at 926 Rosedale Drive, and I've been in Corpus for 40-plus years. I'm speaking to you today about increasing our government by adding Sustainability Division. It is my opinion that as a city, we have more pressing concerns that we could do something about and have a tangible proof of their progress and improvements. As a citizen of this beautiful city, I would like to see the issues of improving the looks of our cities, and it seems that Cal Allen is in dire need of our attention. Also, better roads. I'm glad to hear of the hiring of Mr. Hernandez. I'd like for him to take a trip down Santa Fe, which is what I drive every morning. It eclipses any thrill ride that you would take at Fiesta, Texas, trust me. The street is near our beautiful bay, and it needs a lot of leveling and a lot of smoothing out. I'm glad to see that there are improvements, but I wished it could move faster. Code violations and abandoned houses and businesses. I think some of the problems that the doctor referred to, as far as trash and stuff, has to do with maybe the abandonment of buildings and businesses. I've been living on Rosedale for three, four years now, and there is an abandoned house that I've been trying to get somebody to do something about. The grass is always high, we can never get it cut, and the lawyers are just dragging their feet. And by the time this thing gets ready for auction, it will not be worth anything but the property. I'm a remodeler and a builder, and I'm telling you, it's not going to be worth anything. I've had other code violations that I'm still dealing with on our street. Thirdly, let's increase tourism. We've been talking about this for years. Let's get serious for once and increase the tax base and utilize this nine to 10 months of extraordinary weather we have in drawing hospitality and entertainment industries that we've lost in the past. To me, these are problems that can be solved with our tax dollars and utilized perfectly. These are problems that citizens can get behind and champion our city council and cheer you on to a successful tenure and rejoice that we chose such wise and honorable men and women to lead us. Sustainability is nothing more than a fashionable term designed to kill our oil and gas industry and take away our citizens' right to choose winners and losers in our economy. I may at some time buy an electric car, but if I do, I want it to be because it's the right thing for me, not because I'm being forced to. No one can say and provide concrete evidence of any climate change issues that justify this increase in the size of government. Our oil and gas industry has provided us all, from our grandparents to us today, very good, very good and comfortable life. All due respect to the young man named Alex, but you cannot produce one tangible bit of evidence, not one, that this climate change is a real issue. Let's get real, let's attack our problems...
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Mayor, that concludes the public comment period.
Okay. Thank you. That concludes, as was just said, the public comment period. We'll go back to our city manager's report. We have two items left.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. Yes, but just two more quick items. One is Heather Holbert is going to give us an update on city-owned... One is Heather Holbert is going to give us an update on city-owned cemeteries. Councilman Roy asked that we present this. There are two cemeteries, only two, that the city owns, the Old Bayview and the New Bayview Cemetery.
Right.
And there's been some question recently by some of our community members on the maintenance requirements of the city.
Right.
So Heather has done research with our departments and is going to share that information with you this morning.
Great.
Thanks, Heather.
Next slide, please. Okay. Heather Holbert is assistant city manager. So as the city manager mentioned, we have two cemeteries that the city owns and maintains. One is the Old Bayview Cemetery, and the second is the New Bayview Cemetery. The Old Bayview Cemetery is located at the corner of Romero Street and Waco Street, and the New Bayview Cemetery is located at the corner of Kennedy Avenue and Winnebago Street. So just a little bit of history on the Old Bayview Cemetery. It is the oldest federal military cemetery in Texas, and the first burials began taking place in eighteen forty, in eighteen forty-five. In 2020, the Old Bayview Cemetery was added to the National Register of Historic Places, and the cemetery came into existence in eighteen ninety-seven when H.E. and Hattie Luter donated the land to the Bayview Cemetery Association. Burials began there, and, I mean, the records began in eighteen ninety-nine, and they ceased in nineteen thirteen. So then looking at the New Bayview Cemetery, it follows some of the same timelines as the Old Bayview Cemetery, but a lot of the, several of the tombs and bodies were actually transferred to the Rose Hill Cemetery between nineteen fourteen and nineteen twenty-nine. They do have burials recorded from eighteen ninety-nine through nineteen thirteen in that record. So then looking at the ordinance that lays out what is the responsibility of the city for these city-owned cemeteries. So they are identified as the two that the city owns and maintains, and within the ordinance also defines what the cemetery care is. And so what is the city's responsibility is to provide for the continuing maintenance of the cemetery. This includes mowing, pruning, landscaping, policing of the grounds, and such other maintenance as may be necessary to keep the cemetery presentable at all times. One of the things that the maintenance does not include is the purchase, erection, repair, or replacement of monuments, headstones, markers, or any other item within the cemetery. So when you look at what the city does, the maintenance schedule is that the cemetery, both the Old and the New Bayview Cemetery, are mowed on a weekly basis. Trash removal is done daily at the Old Bayview and Tuesday through Saturday at the New Bayview. And then trees and shrubs are assessed and trimmed on an annual basis. The city works with the Friends of the Old Bayview Cemetery Association to maintain the erection and repair of the replacement of the monuments, headstones, markers, and other items. These volunteers have been specifically trained by the National Park Service to maintain the headstones and the markers. And the staff does, the city staff does rely on them to do that maintenance of those, as we do not have city staff that have been specifically trained for that. So that does conclude my presentation, and I'm available for any questions.
Councilman Roy.
Thank you. You know, I've had a lot of questions just about who is responsible, so thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
I do have a, you know, when you take a look at the Old Bayview Cemetery, which has a wrought iron fence around it, and the New Bayview Cemetery is wide open, and I know we're not responsible for the headstones and that, but, you know, as I was going through the district and looking at some other issues there, you know, I came across the fact that some of these headstones were actually laying out in the middle of the street. And so one of the things I want to look at is, number one, maybe we can do something that can put some type of fencing around there. But the other thing is, is that the Old Bayview Cemetery people are just working on that. I think it would be great to reach out to them and see if they can take on the New Bayview Cemetery also, get some volunteers, you know, maybe I can help recruit.
Sure.
Because I think it's important, and they are, the proximity of them, they're right near each other. And I do think that it's an important piece, is a historical landmark for Corpus Christi. But I would like to continue the dialogue to see whatever we can do to, and I appreciate the fact that we are maintaining that right now. I just would like to do something so that we can hopefully eliminate the vandalism there.
Okay.
So again, thank you for your report and answering that question.
Sure.
Because I've asked multiple people, and everybody says, well, you know, yeah, everybody had a different opinion, so thank you.
Sure. Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would echo Councilman Roy's comments. I think fencing around the New Bayview Cemetery is something we should look into. We could characterize it under the policing language in the ordinance.
Sure.
Assuming that we're not going to try to station a police officer there twenty-four seven, that'd be a bit impractical. There might be a way to police it short of that, putting a fence in. I would have to say this as well, that I have to give props to, I think Mr. Dodd is still in the back of the room yet, there was a damage done to the fencing at the Old Bayview Cemetery several months ago, and his staff got that fixed, I appreciate that. I think that that might could be sort of a model maybe for New Bayview Cemeteries as well. I think it's also worthwhile to reach out to some of these other nonprofit, non-governmental groups as well, to see if they'd be willing to help support that sort of thing as well. Thank you.
Sure. And Councilman Pesley.
Yeah, I agree. I think fencing at the New Bayview Cemetery would be something we ought to look at as we have funds available to do that. I know the New Texas County Historical Society and Mr. Klein's member of this has worked tirelessly over the years when they had funding to do so, to go in and try to resurrect some of the headstones that were damaged. Unfortunately, and I don't know whether it took place at the same time, but probably fifteen years ago or whatever, some kids thought it'd be a really neat thing to do and go through both cemeteries and knock over all the headstones. And these are, these are not just headstones, these are historical monuments in our city. Many of the people who founded this city and county and worked here for years and served the country are buried in these cemeteries, and we owe it to them to make sure that we take care of their final resting place. So I think another thing that would go a long way is we have funding available is some additional lighting around both these cemeteries. If you drive by there at night, it's total darkness, and so it lends itself to vandalism.
Sure.
So I think anything we can do along those lines would be great. So thank you very much for the information.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Heather.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then Mayor Billy Delgado, our emergency management coordinator, just wants to do a quick reminder of hurricane season and how we can prepare. We're in the midst of it right now, and the forecast for hurricanes, the number of hurricanes by one of the universities was recently upgraded to expect more this year. So Billy, thank you for being here.
Sir, thank you, Mayor, council. Wait for the presentation. As the manager said, that one of the universities upgraded the number of storms predicted for this year, but it really doesn't matter how many they predict. All that matters is one. So we, as a city, is preparing to be hit. You have to. We have to be prepared, be proactive, and so we've been meeting and constantly meeting on this. That's where the City Operations Center is, and our primary functions during a major event is strategic direction and control, situational assessments, establishing priorities. As you know, a lot of things are happening. One of the biggest things is the resource management, making sure that everybody in the field that's out there working, protecting our city, has the equipment that they need. Good, one of the big events that we had was the water issue, and a lot of the resources was making sure that the public had water. And then communication is one of the biggest things that we can do, not only internal but with the public. All city departments have all hazard plans. They look at them every year, they update them every year, they submit them, and so we're very good plans that the department has. And when we say all hazard, it's just not hurricane. We're talking hurricane today, but it could be a flood, it could be any other type of emergency they might have. One of the biggest ones lately is we've been working with is the rail, and so they've been working on that. And nursing homes is another big emergency. All nursing home plans have to come through our office, which is a big thing. We want to make sure that they have transportation, they want to make sure they have generators, want to make sure they have a place to take their clients whenever they do have to evacuate, and they do, and they continuously update them every year, and we continuously review them. So that's a big thing. Next. Not only is there an emergency operations center for the city, some departments have an operations center within their department, and that meaning is their officers in the field, or firefighters, or water employees, when they have any needs, they'll go straight to their department operations center. When their needs get out of the realm of what they have, then they'll come to the emergency operations center, and then we get what they need to do that. It's just in that layer of ICS structure that we use, it's that layer, the field, department operations center, the EOC. So we have multiple agencies that we work with, multiple departments that we work with during this time. Next, please. Again, communication is one of the biggest things that can happen. We work very closely with our New Texas County Emergency Operations Center. National Weather Service is the big key to all this, obviously. They're, what we've established with the manager came on is, they would give a briefing, state briefing, then we get the regional briefing, but when the manager came in, he wanted to know if they can work a city Corpus Christi briefing, which helps a lot. And so would they do that for us now? So they give specifically for the city of Corpus Christi, and then we invite our partners in on those meetings, but that was a very big issue that the manager wanted to see if it can happen, and it's happening now. And then we deal with the Coastal Bend Council of Governments, Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council, that's all the hospitals. We deal with them directly and not directly with the hospitals. So they are kind of like the department operations centers. The hospitals go to CBRAC, and CBRAC deals with us. And then Two-on-One Texas. Next, please. Community outreach, like we said, it's a big issue. It's a very big issue. There's things that we want to make sure that the public knows. We did mail out ninety-five thousand pamphlets with our utility bill, many, many public presentations. The mayor was at one the other day. We did a town hall meeting with National Weather Service, and that was well-represented by a lot of the community. We're on Facebook and Twitter, our Reverse Alert. We put them out, we've been using it a lot lately for the heat advisories. Channel Three, we take part with the Channel Three Hurricane Special every year, and that's a, they invite us to do that, so that's a very big one. And then multiple TV interviews on hurricane preparations that we have done this year. But community outreach is very big for all of us. Next, please. These are just some of the agencies that have been involved in the past, and you can see all these major agencies. We stay in communication with all these industries. I'm not going to read them all, but they're very important. It's not only when we get hit in the city, it's not only the city of Corpus Christi, but all these agencies are involved in helping prior to, during, or right after. And so TIDOM, which is our Texas Department of Emergency Management, is very key to us, and our partners, AEP, we've met with AEP representative, the new one, last couple of weeks ago, and we'll meet with them again. And one of the key ones we kind of want to come to is the Functional Need Support Team. This is the group that has come together, they've been with our planning, they represent a lot of different agencies, and so we work with them very closely. Next, please. Again, going back to communication, businesses, hospitals, school district, dialysis centers, nursing homes, general public, and home health care should be on there also. But we've established a communication with all of these. Either it's by email, we've got them all on our emails, and when we get our Corpus Christi briefing, we email this to them. And the school districts have really, really enjoyed this because they have to make a decision on whether they're going to open, close, delay, and then hospitals, and same with dialysis centers. So all, nursing homes too. So we reach, when we get information, we shoot it out to all these different agencies, and so we were in communication with them, and they're all on Reverse Alert also. Next, please. We have fourteen emergency teams comprised of city employees. Teams have been created to respond to emergencies when needed, either prior to, during, or after an emergency. Teams will have a specific role during an emergency. Communication between the EOC and the emergency teams is key to a successful operation. Every city employee is considered essential. If they're not department essential, then they're assigned to a city team, which is going to respond to an emergency. Next, please. Again, when developing the disaster plan, we take the whole community approach. We do drills, weboc drills, we do our Reverse Alert monthly drills. We attended the Coastal Bend Hurricane Conference, which we had a big tabletop. We did our full-scale evacuation exercise. We had more attended this year than we had in a long time. And then we operate under the incident command system, which we do training, the ICS training for our employees. One of the, another issue that the manager brought up for this year, executive team to be trained in the ICS 300, and we're doing that right now. Next, please. We do have a phased evacuation plan. It's just a systematic way of we can evacuate the city instead of everybody leaving at one time. Obviously, it's the low-line areas are the first ones to go, and then it works our way up. Port Aransas has to evacuate through Corpus Christi, so we take that in consideration. And then the island, and then the Flower Bluff area, Oso Creek and North Beach area will follow. But again, we tell the public, don't wait. If you want to leave, leave, but this is our way of systematically making sure that we have an orderly fashion leaving the city of Corpus Christi. And if you're in this zone, and we will put this information out with press briefings and Reverse Alert. Next, please. We do have an assisted evacuation. If anybody says, I don't have a way out of town, well, anyway, that doesn't have a way out of town, all they have to do is catch your nearest bus stop. Simple as that. Catch your nearest bus stop. Riders will be taken to a transfer station, and then the city will transport them to the, then the RTA will transport them to Corpus Christi Gym, where our Corpus Christi Independent School District transit buses will take them out. RTA will allow people to, no charge, passengers will be able to bring their pets and bags. And again, CCSD buses and state buses will be used to transport any evacuees out of town. Next, please. That's the evacuation hub, that's where we have our drill. The same people work the drill, work the evacuation hub, and you can see where Salvation Army, Red Cross is also part of this. Next, please. The way we bring people out, take people out, is the way we want to bring them back in systematically. Obviously, the first thing we want to do is our emergency response. We have to get our first responders out there to see the damage, if it's a major damage, to see what's happening out there. And then the immediate mass care, and then we have to start doing damage assessments. You know, what parts of the city do we need to get out to? And then our second phase is restoration, our essential services. If we need to establish pods like we did during the water bans and water boils, where we have to distribute water, it might not be water, it could be clothes, it could be food, working with that, and any mass care operations and other support that we need to get the city up ready. Businesses, owners, and residents, tier three. We won't ask the residents to come back unless we're ready for them. We don't want them to come back, and we're not ready. So our key message on all our presentations is patience. Be patient, because it's going to take time to do all this, especially if we've been hit with a major event. Next, please. All city departments work great as a team during times of emergency. Departments support other departments in times of crisis, and that's what makes a city able to respond to any way. The manager comes in, we work as a team, he wanted to make sure that the city, all departments work as a team. When planning for disaster, the city always plans for the worst case, you have to. We ask ourselves, what can go wrong? And we can't wait for the event itself. There will be times when challenges will come up, as always, during an emergency or an event, but our team is prepared to handle such situations. We take a proactive approach instead of a reactive approach as a city. Next, please. Again, public notifications, we ask them to look at news media, internet. Kalix Radio was the only radio that stayed up during Hurricane Harvey. We ask the public to go into that. They work directly with our office during emergency, and they'll be giving out information. Next, please. And that's all I have, and I'll take any questions if anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, Coach. Just so y'all know...
Thank you, Coach. Just so y'all know, I am no longer the starting center of our basketball team. This is my city league basketball coach, along with our firefighters over here who coached my sister. But Jim Klein is our starting center, and unfortunately for you, Jim Klein, you have to face our new assistant director of public works out there, so. But I just want to tell you how much I appreciate everything you've done. You're being very modest. You, your partners, and everyone have done a really, really good job. I can't stress that enough. You know, the mayor and I, I was blessed to join her in welcoming people from all over the world to come to the Emergency Services Department building, or whichever building it was, I can't remember. I was like, why are you bringing me here? And it was more of an educational experience for me, because they were all really coming here to listen to him. He was, he, his group, his teams, and all the other teams that work with them, all the emergency first responders, they received an international award on how to prepare for a hurricane and other natural disasters. Billy's never going to tell you that, because that's just how he is. But I want to tell everyone that. Proud of my coach and everything you've done. So I just want to tell you how much I appreciate it. I'm not prepared for hurricane season. I hope everyone else is. But I'll do better next time, Coach.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for the comment.
Councilman Posley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Billy, so with respect to your evacuation center, has there been any discussion with the county about, let's, for example, say that our evacuation center, which is more centrally located in the city limits, were to be damaged to the point where it was, have you worked with the county with respect to possibly having to relocate our evacuation center? Because they do theirs at the fairgrounds.
Do it fairgrounds.
And I don't know if you've had any discussions with them, or how much co-op-ing you've done with the county with respect to those kind of issues?
We work very closely with county, especially during times in the evacuation. There are times that we're communicating constantly. And a simple answer is if we asked if we could be part of it, they would say yes. Just like if they asked if they could be part of ours.
Sure.
Yes, we would do that for each other.
Okay. How many EOC centers do we have at the city?
The city has one city EOC center.
But you said some of your departments have their own.
Have department operations centers. Yes, sir.
So.
There's five, I believe, on the list.
We have five?
I believe so, yes, sir.
So at some point, and I know I've talked to Peter about this before, and I've actually brought this up, I'd like to hear a little bit about the hardness of those centers. In other words, what type of impact that they could sustain and still be able to operate, whether or not they have emergency generator backup power, those kinds of things, because those are all going to be critical issues. I mean, we dodged a bullet for Harvey because of, you know, strength of that storm bypassed us a little bit. If we would have taken a direct hit, it may have been a different story. And I think it's important for us to understand where we would be in that situation.
Yes, sir. And I think on that issue there, the manager has asked us to make sure that we're looking at all the generators, we're looking at all the department operations centers, and so we are working on that issue right now.
Yeah. And maybe even having some portable generators available if you needed to move some around or whatever. But I think those are important issues. It doesn't matter till it matters, you know?
Right. That's why we're getting prepared. Now, I wanted to, I'm asking Billy, we're developing it now, but a map of where there are alternate locations across the city. We're a very spread-out city.
Right.
So how many facilities have a generator, and how many, what's the condition of that building, but more importantly, the generator, the fuel type, the age of the generator, that type of thing?
Okay. And then one last thing, and this is respect to staff and council members, after the wind quits blowing, and for example, after Celia, they implemented martial law, and you couldn't be out after. But for council members and staff people, we may need to come up with some sort of ID that each one of us could have, so that we can move throughout the city when we need to, especially for the district council members. I think that's important.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. I've noticed that there's been an increase in private homes that are being used as senior treatment for nursing homes.
There is. Yes, sir.
And I remember Jim Lago complaining about one down the street from where he lived when he was alive. The, so do we, I know we have this with our large facilities, but what do we do for these smaller kind of, you know, that may have six to eight to 10 people at these private homes that have kind of similar situations?
And that's a great question. After Hurricane Harvey, a couple of them approached us on this, and so we had a meeting with all those that we know of that are home communities that, and I know about these because my mother stayed in one, that five or six people, we encourage them, just like we encourage the public and the nursing homes, you know, what is the plan that you're going to have with their family on evacuation? And so we have put them in our plans now as far as letting them know what's going on. And so we are in contact with home.
So I don't think we have any kind of licensing programs for those kind of homes, or any way to identify them. Is there any communication, you know, that we can do on the front side to possibly identify these, or, you know, have some aspect? I'd rather have some effort on the front side as opposed to trying to figure it out on the backside.
Yes, sir. I can reach out to the ones that we do have on our list and see if they know of any others.
I would also reach out to the hospice, because a lot of times, their, you know, their hospice works with those, you know, they have people in those facilities that they visit them through hospice care. So I would look at that as well, just to have some information as to how that, you know, like I said, there's probably a lot more of these than we think there are. And because it is a cost savings.
Yes, sir.
For some families. But anyway, thank you.
Yes, sir. Will do.
Councilman Klein.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Billy, thank you for this presentation. Help me with my poor memory. I just brought up a couple of meetings back that the city's providing, at least, sandbags for the public. Is that correct? Is that program still ongoing yet, or is it terminated already?
It's concluded, Councilman. We did it for two weekends, and so we still have, the next step is if there is an event, we provide, we provide sand and bags and ask for the community if they want them to help us bag it. So we have a sandbagging machine, and so it's not, you know, it's not too much manual labor.
Right.
But we did the distribution of all the sandbags very successful, again, well in advance of the hurricane season. So if there is a hurricane, and if somebody still needs a sandbag, we'll make those available, and we'll ask for their assistance.
Okay, great. Thank you. On a completely different topic, this weekend, this Saturday and Sunday, the local Surf Rider Foundation is going to hold a Surf Riding for Disabilities, People with Disabilities camp out at Port Aransas. I just got notice of this this morning. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that as well. They're always looking for additional help. It's always a very good event. They've been doing this for years and years and years now. People coming from around the state are brought in from around the state, from out of state for that matter as well. It's going to be starting at Saturday evening, 3:00 p.m., Saturday afternoon at 3:00 p.m., Sunday afternoon at 3:00 p.m. at Avenue G, G as in Gregory, in Port Aransas.
Thank you for the information.
Thank you. Councilman, Councilwoman Campos.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Billy, for this great report. But one of the things that, and I know this is primarily for hurricane season, but one of the things that I noticed is missing is, I mean, God forbid that something catastrophic would happen to one of our refineries. I didn't see that component in your, you know, the, I guess, the subcommittees or whatever you called them. What is the process? Let's say, you know, hurricane's coming, there's lightning, I don't know, you know. I didn't see that part of it. What is a process? Like, you still have to wait for that company, right? Is that how it works? They have to tell you that they experienced some kind of catastrophic accident to tell you this is what we are going to do now, or?
Sure.
Please explain that to us.
And that's a good question. Again, we talked about all emergency, all hazard plans, that's part of the plan. Our LEPC is very strong, working with all our partners, industry partners. Our fire department is well aware of any major incident that would happen if they're called upon. So there's a lot of good communication. We do, Chief Wade can speak more about this, but we do put a battalion chief inside a refinery in their EOC, and our EOC and their EOC is constantly talking if anything major happens. So the communication part of it is there. As far as emergencies for evacuation, we just had our meeting with them on Friday, I believe it was Friday, on communication, making sure that they have a situational awareness of what's happening, and the timing of what's happening, and there's some plans to make that, you know, a group.
Yeah. It just feels that when we see smoke stacks, or we see fire, you know, it takes a long time. It takes a long time for the public to realize, hey, this is, you know, we don't have to evacuate, or. I'm just wondering, are we able to improve that communication with the public?
You know, anytime anything happens, there's always, you go back and look at what, can you do?
Yeah.
It's, communication always comes to the top.
Right.
Always. And we're always looking, not only as emergency management, but as a city, how can we communicate, you know, to the public? And so we're always looking at issues like that.
Okay, one more thing. So whenever, you know, something does happen, how does that reverse alert occur? It occurs through what, LEPC first, to you, then to us, or how does that work?
The refineries go through their system that they put out. So they're able to put out a reverse alerts. Any major weather events, any city events that's happened within the city, then our office puts them out. Like the weather, excessive weather.
Yes.
They come through our office.
Okay, so the city doesn't have to wait. They do their own, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right.
Yes, ma'am. But they'll notify our LEPC. They work very close together.
Okay, so when we start seeing like, you know, fire and what have you, this haze, we call who to say, is there going to be an alert? Like, we call who?
To call?
Yeah. Let's say we're noticing these fires, we're noticing, you know, something. Who do we call?
Yes, it's a.
It's still 911, and then?
Yes. Yes. It's 911.
It's not a special number?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I think that's good. If somebody feels they're in imminent danger, 911, right? If it's way out in the distance, and you already have some intelligence on it, and you just want to get information, you can call me, we can call Billy, the police chief, fire chief. 311, a lot of people we can call.
Well, you know, it happened a few months ago, or a month ago, there were, you know, everyone was seeing this fire from.
Well, that 911?
Yeah, Linden. And it took a long time for us to get a reverse. That's why I was wondering, who are we supposed to call? I ended up calling, I think, Peter, and then, you know, other people were calling. But I guess typically, we're supposed to call 911.
If you feel you're in, your life's in danger.
Well, when I see fire coming out of a.
That's what it's there for.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. To not prolong the discussion, I'm just going to make a couple of quick comments. Thank you. This is a very important presentation for us all. The one thing I would, and I think we, I'm not sure if actually you and I covered this the other day at the roundtable, would suggest, based on, you know, when we were dealing with Harvey, is maybe requesting the emergency plans from our hospitals. Because one of the biggest things that we dealt with, as you all know, is water. Everyone needs water. You know, CCAD, they have to have a very large amount of water in order to function, or they lose well over a million dollars a day. So I had that conversation with them at the roundtable. They have water this time, and that was, you know, back then. But I think the hospitals remember the water tank trucks that we were taking in. It's not easy, and everyone does look to the city. They look to the city and say, you know, can you help us? We need water. Well, you know, our resources are stretched very, very thin, and we will help everyone as much as we can. But I think it would help, Billy, if we requested from all of the, especially our hospitals, we have, well, you know, what, two hospital systems, four hospitals, facilities, what is their emergency plan in regards, all of it? So you have it, and we know what their water, they have to have water.
Yes, ma'am.
Driscoll, you know, I think that was when we were helping tremendously last time. There has to be a plan, even if we have to figure out and help them, that we have to have a plan so we're not dealing with that, you know, in the moment. And then, of course, the other thing is, what we talked about was regional, a regional, maybe, protocol briefing to add to the city's protocol in the midst of an emergency, that we bring in everyone that was at the roundtable the other day, and give them a briefing. So that's something we can continue to discuss and work into our protocol. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Council.
Great. Thank you, Billy. And thank you, Chief Wade, too, and our assistant chief there. Okay, Mayor, that concludes the city manager's comment for this morning.
Okay, great. Thank you. That moves us on to Section G, which is our board and committee appointments.
Yes, ma'am. So the first boards for your consideration are the Planning Commission and the Airport Zoning Commission. Now, the by ordinance, the members of the Airport Zoning Commission and the Planning Commission are the same individuals. So, and they serve three-year staggered terms, they're coterminous with the members on both. Currently, there are three vacancies, and those individuals are seeking reappointment. There's Cynthia Garza, Justin Hedrick, and Brian Mandell, and their attendance rates are in your packet.
Mayor, I'd like to move to reappoint.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
All right. Next, we have the Corpus Christi Regional Transportation Authority. There is one vacancy.
And Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Michael Budd.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Arthur Granado.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Patricia Dominguez.
Dominguez. Any other nominations? Okay, we'll close nominations. And we'll go ahead and, let's see, we have the three. Okay. And we will start to my left, Mr. Suckley.
Dominguez. Art Granado.
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 Art Granado.
Dominguez.
Mr. Granado is appointed.
So next, we have the Ethics Commission. There's one vacancy for your consideration. And just a reminder, these appointments do require two-thirds vote of a full council.
Okay. I'll go and open nominations?
Yes, ma'am.
Would anyone like to nominate?
I'm sorry, where are we?
We're on the Ethics Commission.
Okay. Madam Mayor, I'd like to nominate Modoc for the Ethics Commission.
Modoc, okay.
Let me get to this page.
I'd like to nominate the applicant from District Three, Vanessa Garcia.
Any other nominations? Okay, we'll go ahead and close nominations then. Okay. Who would you like to start with? Ms. Campos or Mr. Suckley again?
We'll go ahead and start with Ms. Campos.
Modoc.
Sulu Modoc. Modoc.
Modoc. Okay, thanks. I was like, is that a trick?
No, it's, her name is Sulu.
Okay, got it.
Friend of mine.
Mr., oh, okay, thank you.
Garcia Modoc. I never vote with Gil, so I'll go Modoc.
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 Said Modoc. And then I had Modoc.
Garcia. Modoc.
All right. Is it Mr. or Ms. Modoc?
Ms.
Ms. Modoc. Mrs. Modoc, okay. So she is appointed. And then finally, we do have the Sister City Committee. There's one vacancy. And for your information, one of the applicants, Joe Benavides, has removed his name from consideration.
Okay. I'd like to nominate Mr., well, his first name is Murad.
Hasbouy.
Hasbouy.
Hasbouy, okay. Any other nominations? Okay, we'll close them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. That will take us to, I know it, I know, we've got to get through consent really quickly. Section I is consent agenda, items six through 25. Councilmembers, would you like to pull anything for individual consideration?
I want to pull 19.
Item number 19. Okay. Any other items that anybody would like to pull? Okay, there being none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve consent agenda with the exception of item number 19.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Item number 19 is a motion accepting the report of the City of Corpus Christi's Municipal Court Operations Review and City Staff's responses. Ms. Sanchez.
Good morning, Constance Sanchez, and I'll stand by with any questions.
Okay, who pulled 19? Okay, Mr. Presley.
So I have two questions, really. One relates to, first of all, I know there's been a recommendation about the respect to the marshals. And I, I too have some concern about that because, you know, as the gentleman testified earlier today, law enforcement is not a profit center and never has been. No offense, Chief, but I, so I had a question about that. And then toward the bottom of, of this report where we went and answered Mr. Bull's recommendations, I'm a little confused now about who's in charge of who. Because the, there's some terminology that got changed there between who we call a director and what we call a director. And, and so I'm trying to understand, in the chain of command, which I always struggle with here at the city, is who's in charge. You know, one of these said that the city manager is in charge of appointing a director. And, and, you know, so who does, who does the director work for? Who does the chief justice work for? You know, how, how's this laid out? So those are my two questions that I have. And, and I want, with respect to the marshals, so I understand that probably the way things have been done in the past are, are probably outdated. And have we taken an opportunity to look at that before we make a rash decision about, you know, changing people's jobs and, and whether or not we actually need those? And where are we at on that? I know y'all have had some meetings about it, Constance. So I'm just trying to get updated on how that goes.
Yes, sir. So once this report came out, we had several, many meetings internally and with the presiding judge, and actually with the police chief about this one recommendation in particular. So what my understanding is, the marshals serve warrants and detain the classy offenders. And the way that they do that is they either go and place door hangers on the doors, they go to people's homes, and then sometimes they will even call the offenders. If like, they leave the door hanger and they'll call, they'll call them back. Well, you know, times have changed and we have looked at the business process with technology. From what I understand, you know, people have those ringer things, so they see them coming, so they don't answer the door. So that's a problem.
Sure.
Another thing that we've instituted
Same problem when politicians come to your door.
They don't answer.
They know when we're there, yeah.
Another thing that we've done on the municipal court admin side is, you know, we're sending text messages. We have automatic calls if they're like older cases. So really, the business model has changed. And we surveyed the top seven cities above us. One of them is like Corpus Christi right now, and that's Fort Worth. Two are hybrids, and they use their marshals for things like code enforcement, for parking, for security. Even one of them helps deal with the homeless, homeless individuals. And then there's four that do, do not have city marshals at all. And so we feel, you know, we've met, and we feel that it is an outdated business model. And that's why our recommendation is to support what was in the report and to eliminate that function completely.
Okay. And so we wouldn't want to look at a hybrid solution on this, or, I mean, and how many marshals are we talking about?
We have six individuals. We have a city marshal and then five underneath the city marshal.
So what your proposal is, is to eliminate all six positions?
Correct.
And just to clarify, today, and Constance is doing a great job, today, we're not recommending the reduction of the marshals. We're presenting this report in our conclusion. Next Tuesday, when I present the budget, there'll be a recommendation regarding the marshals.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, it doesn't matter when you kill the chicken, he's on the, on the death watch, you know, so.
And so the city does have a reduction in force policy, and we, we actually have contacted Human Resources. And we, just as a courtesy, the director of municipal court met with the employees and with Human Resources to let them know what was in the report before it came to council, so they're not, you know, hit blindsided. And so if we do eliminate the warrants from the budget next week, then Human Resources and, and the director will meet with the staff and speak with them about what the next steps are.
Okay. Have we, have we looked, with respect to HR, have we looked at reassignments or
Exactly.
Trying to absorb those people into our existing?
Yes, sir. That, that is what the policy is.
Yeah, councilman, can I just add to that? It's an important thing. So any, any city in Texas of size has what we call a reduction in force or RIF policy.
Very familiar with that.
Are you familiar with it? And many cities, when there were downturns in the economy, had to reduce
Sure.
Positions, people. So our reduction in force policy is managed by Human Resources. And the goal is to help these six individuals place in another job. It's not an automatic placement. It begins with an interview, for us, it begins with identification of a vacancy, preparing them for the interview. If they haven't interviewed in some time, we'll help them with resume preparation, preparing for an interview. And then we'll guide them in the direction of what we think is compatible and help them through that interview process.
Are the marshals licensed peace officers?
I believe they are, yes.
Gilbert's saying they all are, right. So we have numerous, as I was telling the chair of the Audit Committee, there's numerous job functions in our 28 other departments that have a lot of similarities in this program.
Okay.
So we're confident, we care about our employees, I do especially. And there's a lot of evidence to support that. But our goal is to make sure the employees are taken care of. And we'll help them in, in another job opening. We can't just place them automatically, though, because we do interview with a competitive process, no matter the circumstance, and the employee has to be selected. But we have over six weeks between when I propose the budget and council decides. So if council decides to sustain the recommendation, then along those six weeks, we'll be helping those employees. They actually have to lock to prefer, so really, it's two months, eight weeks, before the job is officially eliminated.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm glad you're doing that. I think that's appropriate. And so my next question relates to, you know, who's working for who? And, or just draw me an organizational chart. That's
So Corpus Christi is a municipal court of record, and I'm going to try to say this, but Miles can chime in. And this is outlined in the Texas Government Code. We actually have a special section called ZZ. It's in Section 30, and it, it outlines that the city manager shall appoint a municipal court director to serve as the clerk of, as the clerk of the municipal court of record. And this is mirrored in the city charter. So basically, we do have, the director of municipal court is the court clerk, if you will. But as the way it is now, that director reports ultimately to the city manager. So that's the municipal court admin. So also, we also have municipal court judicial. And that is, we have a presiding judge, and all of the judges are appointed by the city council. And so that is currently the way that it operates. And I'll defer to Miles to chime in.
You covered it well, Constance. That's it. So the, the judges are, are report to the city council. The city council appoints not only the presiding judge who's with us this afternoon, but all the judges. They report to the city council, not the city manager. Gilbert, in this case, our court clerk, if you will, reports to the city manager, like every other civilian, well, mostly every other position civilian is sworn, with the exception of the judges, the city auditor, and the city secretary. So that's in our charter. And Constance mentioned the state regulations, because this, this city went to the legislature some years ago and had this section added to the state.
It's the government code.
The government code, right.
Okay. And I'm new to all this, so I apologize for the question.
No problem. No, it's an important part of the business. So the, that issue is who's in charge, right? In this case, admittedly, you have two people in charge, which is never the best scenario.
Yep.
But we are dealing with the city charter. One good thing is that we know how to talk with each other. So Judge Chappa is here with Gilbert. They have a better working relationship on running the business than I think we've had in a long time. And I'm involved, Constance is involved. We meet, Gilbert and, and the judge meet frequently, and we meet frequently as a team with Miles and others as well.
Yeah, that was my concern. Because when I read that, I said, well, it sounds to me like we've got, you know, two cooks in the same kitchen.
And we do, right.
And so, and we saw how well that worked at the city county health department.
Right.
So I, I just want to make sure we are not setting this up for failure with respect to how this, how this works. And if, if everybody feels like it's comfortable and moving along, well, that's fine. But that was my concern. And I know it's not on the agenda today. At some point, I guess, maybe during the budget process, we're going to talk about the, the lockup facility over here, that we all were given an opportunity to tour. And I have some comments and concerns about that, and I'm sure the other council members do as well. But anyway, thank you very much for your answers. I appreciate it.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman Barada.
Yes, thank you, Constance and Peter and Councilman Presley. And, you know, perhaps, I guess, when we had that meeting, you know, when we were finishing up all the details of the Judge Bull's report, it was, obviously, we were already an hour over where we're going. And, and so I take responsibility. And I know we mentioned just a little bit that we, that there would be opportunity for lateral movement for the employees. I mean, we have roughly, you know, an 18 to 20% vacancy rate. And, you know, we're, we're looking for good people. And so obviously, and those might include law enforcement or, and, or even administrative jobs, and then, and, and as well as code enforcement. So, you know, we'd kind of have a comfort level that there's going to be an opportunity for, for lateral movement.
Or upward movement, Constance. Yeah, it could be an upward
That's an excellent point. I didn't want to get anybody's hopes up. And, and I think, I think that's the other thing, too, for a, a situation for upward movement, is that, you know, in that position, they're really, you're just kind of waiting in limbo because of the, the nature of it. It's just a, an archaic system that we just kind of had. And, and we found that we had quite a few of those. And, and I might, my, I have to give, I have to commend, you know, Judge Chappa and, and Gilbert, you know, with regard to them continuing to, to, like I said, you know, try to manage our efficiency, improve our efficiencies and manage our deficiencies and recognize the challenges that we have, you know, ensuring that there's somebody at every window during, at lunchtime to ensure that we're maximizing it. In fact, when we took a tour of that, there's a, there's even windows that'll go down the hall to overflow. There's a kiosk, so that way individuals can see, they can, they can pay online right then and there. And they can get some assistance instead of having a call. And, you know, we're working through the call process. There's an automated system, you know, when we say we text now, it's not, you know, an employee sitting around texting people. It's an automated system that is utilized through Tyler Technologies, correct? It's utilized through Tyler Technologies to ensure that there's these mass texts that go out, so that way people can utilize that. And we want to, as we improve on that technology, then that allows us to be more efficient. And, and the most important thing is that these people, these individuals that receive these citations or warrants, they get their due process. And, you know, during COVID, I mean, we were, we had some incest that were in excess of six months behind. And so obviously, we, we, and, and, you know, code enforcement, somebody would get another citation, and yet code enforcement, I mean, their case still hadn't been heard. So, yeah, I understand the, the concern that the city marshals have, but I, I, at least I have confidence in, in, in all the things that we've been doing, that we're just trying to sharpen the saw, improve the system, and keep them employed. Now, I, I know there was somebody that had public comment with regard to that, mayor, so.
Yes, and we're going to go, we're going to go to that.
Okay, so, but, but anyway, I think, you know, once again, you know, with, with the, the staff, because of the fact that we operated in a few different, and in fact, if you'll recall, the recommendation was to put everything under the presiding judge. But since they're communicating now even more and more, we're just trying to see if we can continue to expand our system. And then at one time, we may look at that, where it goes, where we just have one person in charge. So, but with that, I'm just, I really appreciate all the work that the committee did and staff did.
Mr. Sanz.
Yes, I just did want to recognize Councilman Barrera, the chairman of the Municipal Court Committee, for his leadership in going through this review. And thanks, Judge Chappa as well. While we put it in the budget and the council approved it, without Judge Chappa's desire to review the efficiencies of the court, it probably wouldn't have gotten done. So we appreciate Judge Gilbert, Councilman Barrera. This is a review of city business, of city operations, to make it more efficient and to save taxpayer dollars and provide its customer service still, even though they're paying a ticket, to provide better customer service for somebody that has to take care of a, of a citation. And so this report was meant to review it, to be kind of an audit, an operations audit of sorts. And people generally don't want to do that, you know, when you're looking at your own, how you're working. So we appreciate the openness, the willingness to be reviewed by a former presiding judge who spent over 20 years in the business. And was the lead judge in San Antonio. So the report is pretty thorough. The Audit Committee, Municipal Court Committee, I mean, had a, had a lot of review of it and input on it. And today, it was placed on the agenda so the full city council can be aware.
Right.
Many of these changes that were recommended, we've already made with Judge Chappa's and Gilbert's leadership. And some of them we'll recommend in the budget next week.
Right. And, and to reiterate, I don't think any of this was done without extreme vetting and, and a lot of time. Like, as mentioned, thank you, Councilman Barada, because your leadership has been very strong on this, on this, on this committee. And of course, Judge, you coming in was, you know, you have made such a difference. Thank you for working together, Gilbert. Thank you. And of course, Constance' team, yours. I think, Councilman, did you have another?
Yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to also echo with regard to the detention center, that facility needs a lot of help. It's really weary and we, we really need to, you know, not only for the, I guess, e- even though we're dealing with individuals that are typically have been arrested or intoxicated or in a situation, whatever, they do have rights and they need to be in a much better facility. In addition to the employees that have to work under the conditions, you know, to have the temporary AC that we're having to deal with, I mean, it was just, it, it's something that we need to get on and we need to go on quick.
Well, it's another, you know, police academy training story.
Right. It's a legacy issue we're trying to deal with, that and the municipal court.
Peter, we got to, don't say that word anymore.
I mean, really, it's, and that, the municipal court itself, too, the, the, the committee toured the court system, and their takeaway was the same as mine when I first saw it, which is really, the age largest city, and this is our court setup.
It's due time.
It all comes down to the money, though. So next Tuesday, would be a great time to talk about this. And we talk about tax rates and that type of thing, because it's not that we want to be in those conditions, it's that, that's what the budget has right now. So we can certainly talk about it over the next two months and see if we want, if there's funding available, we can begin the process.
It's how we prioritize.
Right, exactly.
Exactly. For this body. Okay. Thank you. So, oh, Ms. Getta, though. I wanted to pull Ms. Getta up. And would you like to make comment?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. If you'll just state your name.
My name is Amanda Getta, and I live at 2610 One Hollow. And I am a deputy marshal. I am here off the clock. I'm not on duty. Just want to make that clear. And I would just like y'all to take into consideration that I believe that inadequate information was put in this report and not intentionally. No marshal was ever approached, or no deputy or no city marshal was ever approached to ask us of our daily duties. No marshal was ever approached, or no deputy or no city marshal was ever approached to ask us of our daily duties. Mr. Bull stated that we, the marshals, cleared warrants. We do not have the authority to clear warrants. The only person that can clear a warrant is a judge. There was a lot of misinformation that was put in here. And yes, I know that the lady stated "technology." So technology does work, but that same person that keeps throwing away the citation and this mail that keeps coming in for the ticket that they received is just going to block that number. So we, the marshals, are out there trying to get, bring in the people that do not come in on their own. There needs to be accountability. Like, if I'm obeying the laws and I have insurance and I'm stopping at the stop sign and I'm not speeding, those people that don't obey the laws, that get pulled over and then just throw the citation away and then start receiving, you know, their notices or that we go and knock at their door, they need to be held accountable to some level. Now, I do know that the municipal court, I did not know that our budget was $700,000, but I do want to say that we were driving around in Crown Vics for the last couple of years. We finally got new units to where when I would open the door, if it had rained, I literally had to take a cup to get the water out of the unit. I mentioned this to the director and he, you know, they brought up whatever, and they got his new units because it was a hazard, because the floorboard is now wet. I'm stepping on the brakes, I'm stepping on the gas pedal, it's slippery. So maybe that takes into consideration why the budget was so high. There was also other items that were brought up by Judge Bull where there are redundant positions within the municipal court. And I can guarantee you that some of those positions get paid well over $100,000. My salary is $55,000. But yet, I'm going to be eliminated of a job. And I appreciate that the city wants to find me a place where I can work. I want to continue being a police officer. And if I am to go apply somewhere, it is going to take me six months to a year to get hired because TCO requires extensive background, which I appreciate because I want good brothers and sisters out there with me on the field. And I'm sorry that I'm getting emotional, but I'm losing my job. I have been with the department for 12 years with the city. And for them to just think that I'm dispensable is a gut punch to me. After I was told that we were losing our job, that it was going to come to a vote, then I read in the paper that the city is considering opening an environment department. So it's like, it's okay to dispose of us, but start another department? And like I was saying, I'm sorry if I got off track. If I go apply for a police department, it's going to take me six months to a year to get hired on because of the extensive background. I have to take psychological exams, I have to meet physical requirements, I have to take lie detector tests. It's a long process that is required by TCO. Also, and I've never been here, so I think, is that my one-minute warning or is my timeout?
You're fine.
Judge Bull was under the impression that we, that Gilbert is our direct line supervisor. No, we have, I'm a deputy marshal and I have a city marshal that is my first line of supervisor. He is the one that enters all our requirements that are required by TCO. He's the one that comes and tells us, hey, your two-year cycle is about to come to an end and you're lacking four hours. If you don't get those four hours, you're going to lose your license. But apparently Judge Bull didn't even know that we have somebody over us.
Ms. Getta, I'm going to interrupt you. Is this true? Not that I don't believe you, but Chief Markle, you're here. Does it take, would it take them this long, let's say, for instance, to get onto the force, our force? Absolutely, so that's a yes.
Yeah, but there's other jobs.
No, I understand, just the force.
If you wanted to be, if anybody wanted to be a police officer, it takes months.
No, but forget anybody, they're already, so would it take them?
Let's see, let's have the chief answer. Chief, can you, just so we get it right?
I mean, it's different, you know, if I came in to be a police officer, that's very different from Ms. Getta, I would think.
Lateral processes change, are different among different departments, but yeah, they're pretty extensive. They take months to lateral, as an officer to an officer somewhere else.
Okay.
From one agency to another agency. And I know you're speaking of another position, no, they can take months. Yeah, you know, because the same backgrounds are done, the same, it's the same process to hire. And the state actually has incepted very rigorous standards over the last two years for TCO for processing of, they call it the gypsy laws. They don't want bad cops jumping from agency to agency, so it's actually more rigorous now. She's correct in what she's saying.
And what is this agency that, TCO?
TCO is a licensing agency for all officers in the state of Texas.
Okay, thank you, Chief Markle.
Yes, ma'am.
I, you know, I'm going to let Councilman Barera, I think, address maybe your thoughts because my concern right now is some of the statements you've made in terms of this report that everything is being based on. Yes, Councilman Barera.
You know, Peter, I think the council, obviously, and the committee, is compassionate with regard to the challenges that an individual may face. But, you know, once again, I mean, there's, I can't speak for one individual position. I just have to look at it from an issue with regard to the policy that we have and the recommendations that we have. Now, if we feel that, I can tell you that in my own personal business, with regard to either technology or individuals, we want to capitalize on every asset that every individual has because we want to capitalize that. And the way I look at it, and maybe I'm overly optimistic, is that we want to capitalize on every asset that we have, and that's including our human resources. And if we can utilize your skills in another department and your passion, quite candidly, then what we've done is we failed to communicate with you the opportunities that you have in the rest of the area. I can't guarantee you're going to get a job, you know? What is it, but the responsibility, I have a responsibility to you, we have a responsibility to you, and we have a responsibility to the rest of the community to ensure that we're maximizing those dollars. So, you know, Gilbert, Constance, well, Peter's talking, I would just ensure that we ensure that Ms. Getta has every opportunity to continue to work with the city at either at the same pay that she's with, she has, or that she has an opportunity for upward mobility. So.
So I will close with, I just want to remind the council that the job of a deputy marshal is not to bring in revenue or monies. It is to bring in the individuals that have cases that do not come in on their own. You know, we're not out there, you know, dragging people. We're, you know, we're working with them. When I go to somebody's house, if they don't answer the door, that's when I leave a door hanger. And when they call me, because I'll leave my number on there, when they call me, I do everything that I can to try, I tell them, if you want to come in tomorrow, I'll meet you downstairs and I'll walk you through the process. Our judges want to work with you so that you can get these cases resolved. So that's just a reminder that it's not about money. We're not bringing people in so that the city can make revenue or make money. We want them to be able to get these cases resolved. So, thank you.
Exactly, and the point is to get the cases adjudicated and get those people their constitutional rights. And then sometimes those individuals may not have the resources or, you know, I joke around it. I don't think anybody under 30 checks their mail anymore, you know? And what is it, and sometimes they, and in my old life, I used to work for a finance company, and the only way I get people to pay is to knock on their door. You know, and so I understand exactly what you're dealing with.
All right, thank you so much for your time.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Getta, thank you, thank you for staying to comment. Yes. Councilman Pusley.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You know, this is very difficult. And there's nobody in this room that appreciates technology more than I do. It's been a big part of my life. And, you know, there always are ways that that's going to help you do a better job. But we're kind of, we're diving in the deep end here without logistics on whether or not the technology is going to be any more successful than what we're doing, I guess. And I'm just concerned that we don't have that human element involved that may make a difference in how this process goes. I mean, if you send out these citations, I mean, she's right, after a while, if they don't want to talk to you, they're not going to answer your emails, they're not going to answer your phone calls, they're not going to, you can do that as much as you want to and it's not going to make any difference. But, and the fact that as law enforcement officers, this is going to be, if they want to continue in law enforcement, it's going to be a challenge for them, probably anywhere they go, to try to seek employment. I mean, I don't know, I just have a real consternation about this. I care deeply about people who have worked for the city 12, 15, 20 years, whatever it is, and dedicated their lives to this institution where they could have probably gone into the private sector and made more money. Anyway.
Yeah, Councilman, we do as what we share your sentiment, we do as well. The city has, if you exclude sworn positions, we probably have 3,000, over 3,000 positions in the city. And so you heard the deputy marshal's salary level. I'm sure, based on her presentation today, she can do better than even that in a job that you might not even need a peace officer's license for, not to say that that's what she wants to do. But our goal has been consistently, and I want to articulate it here, to use our policy, it's an internal protocol policy, to help in this situation. The city, in my four years here, hasn't had to use this, I don't think, with the exception of the health district. But if you just look at that example, we placed not only all of our city employees in a position, but all the county. All the county employees, with the exception of a few that didn't want to proceed through the process. So that's good evidence there to say we care and we know that human element's there, both on the other side of the door and our door, our employees, and certainly somebody that's worked here for over a decade. We're not just going to, you know.
Okay, well, I'll trust your input on this. And I will comment on, Councilman Barrera is right. The detention center is lacking in a lot of respects. But I think there's some things we can do even before we build it. I think it's inhumane that we force people to go in a lock cell for four hours plus and the only thing they have to sit on is the concrete floor. I think that's absolutely inhumane. And I know there are people who think the people that get arrested ought to be taken out in the brush country and put in a tent. But we don't get to do that in Texas. We have very strict laws about that. And so we should provide something better for people that are arrested because many times, those are not criminals we're putting in there. These are honest citizens who made a mistake at something and we take them during the winter or summer and we lock them in a cell for four hours minimum, and the only thing they have is a concrete floor. And that's just not proper.
Okay, we'll look into that, Councilman.
Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. With regards to the detention center, I'm assuming there's some sort of preventive maintenance schedule or?
There is, we, it's a lease, Councilman, it's a leased facility, and the building admittedly is.
Well, if it's a leased facility, then they should still have some preventive maintenance associated with it, right?
The landlord does, yes, sir.
And we should have some sort of requirement for them, right?
We do, in our lease terms. Gilbert's here, he can speak to it.
So their history maintaining the building is not very good. As you can see, they've had that AC unit outside the building for over a year. So what we did with this current budget is through our contract, reduced, asked to reduce the annual pay by, I believe it was $30,000, so that we could make some repairs to the place, to the location.
I'm just, for the purposes here, even if it's a leased property, you should have some sort of records in terms of maintenance, and there should be some inspection criteria. I believe even our own jail here at the county maintains has state inspections. Do we have state inspections on our facilities?
Not state inspections that I recall in our facility, no.
So there's no requirement for state inspections of our detention facility?
I'm not saying that there's not a requirement, we haven't had a state inspection.
Yeah, the state regulatory structure, which applies to jails, does not apply to our facility because it's not there for people to be there long-term and be an alternate residence. It's there just for processing.
Okay. Whether we do that or not, I think there should be some regiment for maintenance, inspection, some sort of criteria. I mean, it just, it seems like we would have, we do that for our own restrooms and we have janitorial services for that kind of stuff. So I just, it seems like we should have some protocols in place.
There, Councilmember, there are janitorial services provided by the, I'm sorry, the person that we rent from.
Okay, I'm just giving that as an example, right? You have some schedule, there's some, probably something on the back of the door saying, somebody who came in, did the work, and stuff like that. You know, we should have the same thing for maintenance. And I have to be honest, I didn't get through the entire review that was done here because of my injury here recently. So I will be abstaining from this vote until I can go through it a little bit further. Plus, anything that Councilman Barrera's in charge of, I have to question, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Barrera, you're next. Okay, I'm next. I just, I have two quick questions. First of all, I agree with everyone on the municipal court committee. That is a post-apocalyptic place to work. And we need to do something about that, without question. Now, if someone like Ms. Getta was to be hired in a new part of the city, does she retain all of her benefits? Everything like that, correct?
Yeah, all of her benefits, her tenure.
I have to ask publicly because other things have been asked of us.
Right.
And then, I guess my biggest concern is we deal with the municipal court judges, right? And I know that we're the municipal court committee, but y'all work for the city manager. So why are we deciding on people's jobs over here? That's y'all's job.
So today, as I mentioned, Councilman, we're not deciding anything with respect to the jobs. The report has a recommendation.
Yeah, but that's all that's been discussed. I understand and I apologize for bringing it up.
I just have, so part two of what I'm going to say is the city council has the authority to authorize positions. While people, the employees, report to the city manager. If I don't have an authorized position, I can't hire somebody. So one of the jobs of the city council, in addition to approving and appropriating funds, is authorizing a number of positions, and that's done as part of the budget process.
But y'all can do that without us, though.
No, we can't, I can't.
You really, you can't?
I can't create, say this 4,000.
A new position in the city? I didn't know that.
Yeah, say this 4,000 positions, if I want to hire 4,001, I can't unless city council says we'll give you one more position. Yes, sir. It's one of the powers.
Well, we probably should change something in that policy because nine of us shouldn't be deciding those.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
Right, thanks, Councilman. No, no worries, no problem.
And to clarify, today is only accepting this report.
Right.
So what happens if we don't accept this report?
I'm not sure, I think, let's see if Miles has a good answer.
Technically, nothing. I mean, it's still a report, it's been issued to the city, it's been recommended by the municipal court committee, and the contents of the report can be considered by the, much of it is directed primarily at the city staff, and it can be considered by the city staff regardless of whether or not it's accepted by the city council. The acceptance is merely a formality. However, it is provided to city council because it does back up some of the recommendations that will be made in the budget proposal that will be provided to the city council.
Yeah. I guess it's, just to repeat.
It doesn't carry, I mean, to a degree. My concerns are some of the statements Ms. Getta made that they weren't spoken to. So I would imagine you all would be concerned with those as well. Because this report is either being accepted by this council for you and to you to turn around and use it to justify action moving forward. Not justify, but it carries some weight, or it wouldn't be in front of us.
Right, it provides a little more information. We already know that four of the seven cities above us don't have any marshals at all. Two of them have changed their duties over the time. And we have facts we haven't even talked about today, we'll show you that, the amount of arrests that are. The amount of arrests that are made when people have warrants whereby the police officers, our Corpus Christi Police Department is in fact making more arrests per, I guess, per person than the marshals are because the, because people won't answer the door, so the marshals can't break the door down and go arrest people. So what is happening is the police officers under carrying out other duties of finding people with warrants and then making more arrests than the marshals. So the evidence demonstrates, and we'll show you that when we present the budget and have the workshop on municipal court. It demonstrates that this business model is outdated and it's not a good use of taxpayer money. And so that's why we're recommending it. The report really confirmed what we already knew. There's nothing, we didn't learn anything from, with respect to the marshals. We had already begun looking at this last year, in fact, or two years ago, when we had COVID, where for two years, no, nothing was really happening because the courts were closed. But the marshals were still here, so I began to ask questions then because we knew the best practice in the state, which is a lot of cities don't use them anymore. So that's just some comment. I did want to point out what Miles, one thing Miles said, which is the Municipal Court Committee vetted this for many, many hours and they did recommend to the full city council the acceptance of the report.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
I just want to say that the city council has two council subcommittees. One is the Municipal Court Subcommittee chaired by Councilman Barrera.
Right.
And so that committee had the report, had a briefing on the report, had a lot of dialogue on the report. I had access to myself, Judge Chapa, Gilbert, Constance, and have thoroughly vetted it and to the point where they're recommending the acceptance today of this, of the city council.
Okay. Councilman Hunter.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Oh, Councilwoman.
I was just about to say that, that we have been briefed on that. Myself, Councilman Hunter, Councilman Pusley, and of course, our chairman had been briefed on this. So this was no surprise. I mean, we were told that the HR was going to do everything that it could to find jobs for the displaced marshals. But I don't know, it just seems, again, we knew and we were briefed and we had agreed, so.
Okay.
Well, okay, if you didn't agree, you didn't say that you didn't approve of this report.
The committee, what's that?
Yes, the committee.
I wanted to say, Mayor, and anybody else in the listening, that her comments are absolutely incorrect and do not apply to me and I served on that committee. I don't care what anybody else wants to say about that. And so, and I have the right as a member of this council to question what any committee has done, whether they're appointed by the council or otherwise, and that's exactly what I'm doing. So Ms. Campos, that's my response to your.
Okay, we're going to agree to disagree.
You're making an accusation and your accusation is incorrect.
I am not making an accusation, sir. No, I'm not. I'm stating the facts, just the fact.
If I were talking about accusations, I want to say something to you. Your verbal comments during public forum are not only inappropriate, they're illegal.
What are you talking about?
Okay, well, guys, let's not, we're not going to go into anything that's not, on this item. And this item is about accepting the report. So at this time, I think we've got all of our comments that have been made and we've completed with that. Ms. Getta, I'm sorry, we're going to.
Can I say one more comment? I know that.
You'd have to come right down here and really quickly and we're going to move on. And again, this is just accepting the report, which is not doing anything one way or the other.
I would just like to comment on Zanoni's statement of, yes, CCPD does pick up more municipal court warrants than we do because they are allowed to do traffic stops. In my capacity as a deputy marshal, I am not allowed to do traffic stops because then my boss, the city marshal, would have to then do other things as far as racial profiling and so many other things that are involved with that. Now, does that mean that if I see a crime committed in front of me or if I see CCPD needing assistance, that I'm not going to stop? No, I am going to stop because I'm a police officer.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Thank you. Okay, so with that, I'm going to go ahead and entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move for approval or acceptance of the report.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. We're going to, you're abstaining? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and break for lunch and then we will return in about 45 minutes to an hour. Thank you. Mayor, we have an, did you want to have the executive? Let's hold on. Let's see, the council will go into executive session on item number 30 per Texas Government Code, Sections 551.071. Thank you.
Somebody tap on the window back there.
Excellent. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Wendy Herman and I am the Senior Intergovernmental Relations Coordinator for the City of Corpus Christi. And I'm here to give you a little update on the second special session. The good news -- Mr. Hernandez, are you okay? Okay. You look pained, sir. On the June the 22nd, the Governor gave a call, and when he gives a call, they can only consider the things that are written on the call. The next slide that I have up there will have the exact wording of the call. The next slide that I have up there will give me -- there it is. We'll give you the exact wording of the call. It was all about property taxes this time. They couldn't manage to get it straight figured out during the regular session or the first session. There were, as I told you guys before, they had two schools of thought about how to go about doing this. Whether it should be an increase in the homestead exemption, or if it should be a cut in the property tax rate. And so this is kind of the compromise that was hammered out. The highlights of this compromise is there will be over $12 billion that will be spent on reducing the school property tax rate. That comes out to about 10.7 cents per hundred dollar valuation on your home. Now that is for homesteads and business properties. The homestead exemption is going to go up from $100,000, or up to $100,000. It's previously been about $40,000. And also, non-homestead properties that are valued under $5 million, this would include second homes, this could include business properties. Residential and commercial will have a cap on the appraisal value at 20,000, or 20 percent. This is a three-year pilot program. This is not something that we've done here in the state of Texas before. And I'm not really sure exactly how this is gonna to work out. Other states that do this, they have an income tax, and it's really based on, they base the amount that you can pay based on your income or the income of your business. And we don't have a state income tax here, so they're not gonna do it that way. So they haven't really given us a lot of details yet on how that's going to, the pilot program is going to work out. There's also going to be a saving on franchise taxes for small businesses that have revenues of under $2.47 million. And they are also adding elected officials to appraisal boards, which is the first time that that's ever happened. Once again, there's not a lot of details worked out in this bill of yet. The first hurdle it has to get passed was, of course, the Governor's signature, and it passed that one. The next one, it has to get passed through voters. The conclusion that I put on this is that the voters have to approve this, the bill, and if it is approved, it will go into effect on January 1st, and then they'll start working on, they'll have between Election Day and January 1st to figure out all the hows and whys. They do expect to have more executive, or more special sessions. I know that the Lieutenant Governor has asked the Governor to bring back another special session in September that will deal specifically with schools, school funding, school vouchers, teacher pay, all things school. And so I suspect that that's probably going to happen on that. And that is pretty much the update. They have adjourned the second session, and they haven't called the next one yet. And as soon as they do, we'll be letting you guys, letting Council know what happened, what it is. Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Councilman Pasley.
One quick one, Wendy.
Yes, sir.
And I've asked this question to a couple of legislators, and they didn't know the answer either.
Ooh!
Maybe you can find out.
Okay.
On this $100,000 tax deal for the homestead exemptions that's applied to school districts only.
That is my understanding.
Okay.
Now, that could change, but that is my understanding.
Okay.
Because I wanted to find out exactly how this tax bill was going to affect the city.
Yeah.
And from what I can tell about, the only way that this tax bill is going to affect the city is that we're supposed to base our tax rates when we get the appraisal roll this year, we're supposed to base it on the fact that this bill has passed, and it has passed the voters, so that we're ready to go in January.
Yeah. So my question on the $100,000 is currently, school districts have to vote to approve increases in the relief for, are the homestead exemption increases.
Mm-hmm.
And I asked specifically, I said, do the school districts, are they gonna have to vote this $100,000, or is it gonna be mandatory? And surprisingly, the legislators I talked to did not know the answer to that.
Well, this is not gonna surprise you, sir. I don't know the answer to that either. And it's not because there's, we don't have the answer, we can't find the answer. The answer's not known to that question.
Because currently, most school districts give $20,000. And the only school district I know of in this region that gives the extra 20 that you can, are permitted by current state law to give, the extra 20,000 to bring it to 40, the only school district that does that is Tulosso Midway, and we implemented that when I was on the school board.
Yes, sir. I remember hearing you talk about that on the radio, and I, when I was in Austin last week, I asked our delegation about that, and the answer is, we don't know yet.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry.
Because I will guarantee you, if it's left up to the school districts, they're not gonna vote to increase that to $100,000.
Right. Right. They have, that is an option for them, and I'm not sure about that.
It's false hope, I think.
Okay. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I'm hoping to.
Thank you, Wendy.
Yes, ma'am.
No more questions.
Okay, so that'll take us to Section L, our public hearings. Item number 26 is a zoning case 0523-02, Diego Vazquez, District 1, an ordinance rezoning property at or near 1113 Comanche Street.
Waiting for the presentation to come up. Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The case before you is to rezone the property located at 1113 Comanche Street from CI intensive commercial district to IL light industrial district. The property is .17 acres in size, and it is platted. The applicant is Diego Vazquez. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow for the construction of a new facility that will warehouse, that will allow for the warehousing of goods, allow for custom welding services, and to provide a area for machine repair shop. The property is part of the downtown area development plan, which was adopted in March of, March 27, 2018. The plan and the future land use map calls for mixed uses. Mixed uses can be interpreted several ways. One, it could be stacked vertically, and it could be residential condos with, or any kind of living with commercial and other types of facilities on the lower level, or it could be stacked horizontally, which is what we have in this case. In the inner-city core, I guess you'd say the urban core, we have a little bit of industrial, we have a little bit of commercial, and we have a little bit of residential. The subject, to the north of the subject property across Comanche is professional office, zoned CI. To the south of the subject property, there's a vacant lot, zoned CI. To the east, across Waco Street, there are professional offices and commercial businesses, zoned CI. And to the west, there's a small restaurant and commercial business, zoned IL. Nineteen notices were mailed out within the 200-foot notification area. One was returned in opposition, obviously represented by one owner, and zero were returned in favor. The one in opposition also indicates that 3.65 percent of the property owners within the 200-foot notification area are opposed to this rezoning. Additionally, the one in opposition did not state why they were opposed. The proposed rezoning promotes an entrepreneurial ecosystem, which has proven successful in this case, because the applicant is expanding. The proposed rezoning values entrepreneurial innovation. After evaluation of case material, staff recommends a special permit in conjunction with the base zoning district that will only allow for additional uses, such as warehousing of goods, custom welding services, and a machine repair shop. Such rezoning will protect the base zoning uses and prohibit more intensive uses that would be allowed by the IL zoning. Planning Commission and staff recommends denial of the requested zoning change from CI to IL in lieu of approval of a CISP, which is the intensive commercial district with a special permit subject to the following conditions. The use allowed on the subject property, other than the use permitted in the base zoning district by right, will be, of course, warehousing of goods, custom welding services, and a machine repair shop. A minimum, a minimum seven-foot tall fence, screening fence is required, and I want to say that screening fence is not required because of any zoning or any buffer. It's required because the owner, who's here and would like to speak afterwards, the owner wants to secure and protect his property, and also he wants to be a good neighbor to the area. All lighting will be shielded, and all pole lights will have, be full, full cutoff types. There'll be no outdoor storage permitted. Welding and machine repair will all be done inside the new facility. The hours of operation will be not before 6:00 a.m. and not after 10:00 p.m. No pole-mounted signage will be allowed on Waco Street. The NORS regulations always apply in any commercial business. Other requirements, and we have on 9 and 10 are standard comments that basically say applicable UDC building and fire codes still apply, even though this is a special permit. And of course, if a complete building permit application is not submitted within 12 months, this special permit will expire. With that, I stand by for any questions.
Councilman Hutcherson.
Moved to approve.
As.
All right. Moved to approve as suggested by staff and planning commission.
Okay, we need to hold a public hearing. I'm sorry, need to hold a public hearing.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Councilman Roy.
The only thing I had a question on, you answered that question, was about the signage on Waco Street. So that's just characteristic of everything that's as far as commercial buildings go.
Correct.
Right.
And this applicant owns, if you see what I have on the screen, the area highlighted in red, he owns that. He owns the, obviously, to the west, number 17. He owns number 18, and he owns number 15. So if he wanted to, he could put signage along staples that identifies all of his property or what he offers, right?
Okay.
So there are other options for him.
All right. Thank you.
Councilman Pasley.
Okay, Al, so Monday, I guess it was, Mayor, when we met with staff, right? Okay. The Mayor and I were meeting with code enforcement staff about another issue, and I brought this up for a couple of reasons. One, we're requiring this applicant through a special permit, and I've always had a little bit of a burr under my saddle about special permits, because we grant dozens of these special permits every year. these special permits every year, and then the city never goes back and inspects to see whether or not they're complying with those special permits unless somebody complains. So, it doesn't matter till it matters. And, and that's not a knock on you or anybody else, I think it's just a fact of the way it happens, and, but, the staff told Mayor and I at this meeting that the applicant owned Lot 16, because on Lot 16, there is some sort of auto body wrecking yard or something business that goes on there, is that not correct?
No, if my staff, and I can't imagine you had a meeting with, without me, but my staff, that wasn't, that was incorrect, right? The applicant owns the lot in red, he owns seventeen, he owns eighteen, and he owns fifteen.
Okay.
Sixteen is the one in opposition, which is just a slap now, it's, the building has been raised.
Okay, then on Lot 15, there's a business that, that the current, this applicant owns as well. It has a hurricane fence around it.
Yes.
And, and I don't know what it looks like today. I zoomed in on this on Google Earth, which is something I've asked y'all to do for, ever since I've been here, but I haven't gotten that done yet. And it, it didn't look very clean. I mean, there was a lot of junk cars and stuff stacked out there, I don't know exactly what kind of business is there. So, what is the zoning for that piece of property as compared to this new one that we're doing now?
Great question. All of, where Lot 17, 18, 19, that whole strip, you see that dark line, the north-south line, all of that is light industrial. Everything else is CI, which is intensive commercial, so it's all zoned the same to the...
So, what's the difference between light industrial, which is the old I-2?
Yes.
And intensive?
The difference between commercial and intensive is that the CI limits, if you will, the, many say it's the bridge between commercial and industrial. So, it, it's kind of bridges between real, you know, real light industrial products and commercial products. So, what, the special permit that we, we worked out with the applicant is to allow him to do the business that he wants to do, but it still keeps, if you will, and I know you're gonna say, well, I've been in that area, it doesn't look so good, but it keeps the character of the area there. So, even though the, the area development plan or the future land use map says mixed use, right, eventually, hopefully, we'll get there, we want to get there, right? This still allows the transition to happen without, as, without upsetting the, the quiet enjoyment of what's there now.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, why would we require a seven-foot screening fence around this piece of property and not have it around the one where they're operating now?
That's a great question, and, and keep in mind, the seven-foot screening fence is something that the applicant wants to do for, for the secure, to secure his property, to, to protect the property, I guess. It's not a requirement zoning-wise or buffer-wise, so it's something that the applicant wants to do, and I'm, you know, he, he's interested in being a good neighbor, and when he comes up in public hearing, you, you can ask those same questions. I'm sure he wants to consolidate, consolidate some of the things he can and create a better image on long staples and along Comanche.
Well, my point in all this, Al, was if we're gonna require strict restrictions on what you're doing, and I'm, and I'm fine with what you're doing on this piece of property with the zoning, it's just that my problem has always been, we do this to, in this case, it's the same property owner, but this property owner, but the other property owners around there are doing something worse, and we, the city doesn't say anything about that. So, if we're gonna require them to operate a clean operation in one lot, you know, the two over ought to be doing the same thing. And, so that's my issue.
Understood.
And I'm sorry, you, I thought you were gonna be at that meeting, but obviously you didn't get that email.
I'll be at the next one, I'm sure.
Councilman Roy. That's, okay, okay, great. Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and open public comment, public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment on item number twenty-six? Yes, sir.
Diego Vazquez, I reside at 2913 Persimmon Street. He pretty much explained everything on this slide, as far as what I wanna do. As far as hurricane fence, were, were we talking about that lot? The corner lot? You're talking about the businesses?
He was talking about this.
Right? Okay. That one, I just have one fence on Waco, that's all I have. And it's just, it's section. And all these fences went up when all those houses were there, when all the squatters were there, I'm sure y'all seen them on Comanche and Waco, coming into Courthouse or City Hall, it was really bad. I cleaned all that up, that whole corner had all that torn down. I'm agreeing to everything the zoning wants to do, as far as putting the fence up and all that, to protect my business from people just looking in and trying to steal stuff, or, I dealt with a lot of that before we got to this point. It's all cleaned up. I'm expanding, and this is why I'm requesting, just to change that zoning, so I can stay in that area. I've been there 10 years, growing, I do a lot of work, you know, downtown, everywhere. I just hope y'all consider all this. I'm a small business owner here in Corpus. That's all I gotta say.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to make public comment on item number twenty-six? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
I'm sorry, and was it for staff's recommend, it was?
Yes.
This recommendation, right?
Yes.
The combination with a special permit?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good.
The motion carries. Item number twenty, or, Section M, individual consideration items numbers twenty-seven through twenty-eight. Item number twenty-seven is a resolution authorizing the negotiation and execution of four, five-year service agreements for the third-party administration of medical, dental, Cobra, pharmacy benefit management, life and accidental death, and dismemberment, long-term disability, or, and long-term disability.
Motion to approve.
Okay, do we?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a comment. Mr. Barada.
You know, you know, Mayor? I, I wanna commend staff, 'cause I know they worked hard on this. I do, I, I, I just, the ideology that I have happens to differ with our consultant. And although, I, I can appreciate all the work they've done. I, I have to say that. And I think I can appreciate, I think if the employees that are here, they understand, and I think that they, they, they recognize that they have good benefits, you know? But the challenge, I'm gonna vote no, and, and the only reason is because, once again, it's, it's, it's the ideology with which I've been taught, you know? One of the things that, that, I got frustrated when I started reading this, because it says, like, one of the things that I requested is that we reprice claims, because we have only two hospital systems here. And we can go to, and, and I just kind of expect that from our consultant, is that we could go to and have them reprice the claims and tell us, can we get a better deal? Now, have we done that analysis? No, we haven't. You know, what is it, at, I know that the Doctor Center has a direct contract with several of the public agencies around town, I know because I helped to write it almost 15 years ago, you know? And it's a way for the employees to get better service, they can get, and it's a way to control cost, you know? And it's not something that, that we find that is advantageous to us. And it's just that we haven't explored it. That's my thing, I'm not opposed, but we haven't explored it, you know? And, and one of the things that frustrated me here is that it looks like we put into the RFP to have the respondents reprice the claims at the current benefits, and we knocked out three carriers, which are major carriers. Because of that, I think that, once again, that kind of limited our, let me see if I had that here. Where was it? Bear with me. So, we knocked out Aetna, not a small group. We knocked out Cigna, not a small group. We knocked out TML, you know, those aren't fly-by-night organizations. And usually, when you knock out, you know, one of the major players in the industry, then, you know, candidly, and, there's a problem with the procurement process. And I, I don't, you know, Josh, I'm not asking you to come back and, and Michael to come back and justify that. I just see a lot of flaws, and I, I think, I, I just, I know you can do better. The work that I saw you do with municipal court, your team, was exemplary, exemplary. So, I know that our team has it in it, in them. I know that our team has it in them. And I'm just disappointed. So, for that, I'm voting no. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. We do have, Chair comment?
I do.
Oh, Mr. Pusley.
Yeah, I, I wanna respond to Councilman Barrera, because I truly respect his knowledge of, of the industry. I'm not an insurance guy. I don't even handle the insurance at my house. The wife pays all that. I have no clue. But I, at the county, for many years, when I first came there, we had the sole source, or whatever it's called, where we were using somebody here locally for our medical and everything. And it, it was always a real bone of contention. Employees hated it, they were restricted on what physicians they could go to, they were restricted on what hospitals they could go to. If they were suffering from a catastrophic illness such as cancer, they had to go through this long process of approval to go to MD Anderson or anywhere else to receive treatment. And so, we finally made the, bit the bullet and made the change to pretty much kind of coverage that we are doing here. And after that, the employees were much happier, and it was, it was a little more expensive, I'll, I'll admit that, but I think from a standpoint of it made life better and easier for everybody, it was great. So, you know, I, I do respect Councilman Barrera's knowledge in this area, and, you know, maybe next time we do this, we can address some of his issues, but I wanna compliment you on your hard work. I know y'all put a lot of effort into this. And so, anyway, he and I'll go have a drink later, and we'll discuss and discuss it.
Yeah. So, thank you, Councilman, and I guess the big, for me, and, and this is my insurance, that I don't, I provide this for my family, and so, the option to be able to, or to not be restricted is, is a very, it's very important to me. Pros and cons to all of it. I did insurance, I didn't necessarily do, you know, health insurance, but I'm very familiar with what it takes to, you know, look at holistically, what is the best, there isn't a quote "best option." There is, and what drives that is, there is a best option, but I'm saying, at, at what point?
So, my argument is, we haven't examined that. If, if I have to, if, if I had to choose, if I'm making fifteen dollars an hour, twelve bucks an hour, and, and I wanna choose a specific set of doctors, but then all of a sudden, it costs me two hundred dollars a month, or a hundred dollars a paycheck to insure my entire family, then I might consider that, but I don't have the choice.
Right.
And, and all I've said is that we haven't prudently absorbed, explored the option, and then, and you know what, I'm sorry, I forgot, you got me started. And, and one of the things that, that I say is that particularly, I, I mean, I, I guess from looking through the numbers here, the budget that we set aside for the health plan is about thirty-five million?
To administer?
On the claims side?
Yeah, claims and administration.
Altogether, about forty-four.
Forty-four. And, and with every customer I deal with, I'm dealing with a CFO, and, and with all due respect, not human resources, because it's, it's, it's a, it's a very, out of a budget, what's, what's our operating budget, two sixty?
City?
Yeah.
All city?
No, the operating budget.
For what, though?
Yeah, for the city, two sixty.
The city? No, it's probably like seven hundred million, all the operations, all the funds?
No, 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 I'm not talking about any cannibal capital expenditures, I'm just talking...
I mean, we have the general fund, you have the, the water, all those...
Okay, I guess we can go back and review that, but even if you then, if you said it's seven, then you're looking at eight percent of the entire budget. If you said it's seven hundred million, which I, I'm gonna try, I, I don't think it's that much, but...
Yes, yes.
All, all I'm saying is that typically, every situation, whether it's two lives, and my largest group, five hundred, whether it's two lives or five hundred lives, I'm dealing with somebody in finance. And, you know, of course, if it's only two lives, then you're obviously dealing with somebody in finance. But, but my, that, that's my thing, we have not explored the option. And, you know, a, a big thing that we all talk about is access to care. And, and you know, once again, I, I think staff did, they, they did a lot of hard work. I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying they didn't work hard. I'm not saying they didn't work hard. I just, I just don't agree with the ideology, because if, if, if you're only making, you know, thirty thousand dollars a year, then a two thousand dollar deductible is high. And if it's a high deductible health plan, then you just won't go to the doctor. That's, that's just my point, you know, whatever the situation is. I mean, I'd live it. But, once again, my problem is not that we didn't do hard work, it's just we didn't explore the options. Anyway, thanks. I, I won't say anything more, I promise. Go ahead.
No, you're fine, you're fine. No, we, we respect, you just, no. No, we, we respect that. So, we, we have a motion? No.
Oh, one second.
Okay. Oh, there is.
One second.
Oh, who's second?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Okay, sorry.
It's all right.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no.
No.
The motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-eight is a resolution amending council policy number eight of the Code of Ordinances.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilor Ernesto de Garza, Director of Public Works. Before you today is a resolution amending council policy number eight of the Code of Ordinances to add requirements for naming transportation facilities within the city limits. City staff recently received a request to name the new Park Road 22 Bridge, which is a state-owned transportation facility. In investigating city policy, staff discovered that the current Code of Ordinances does not address the naming or renaming of a state-owned transportation facility within the city limits. In addition, the current policy does not maintain adequate mechanism to vet and ascertain public input on proposed renaming submissions prior to the request come into council. This resolution amends the council policy to include all transportation facilities within the city's jurisdiction, and requires that the Transportation Advisory Commission review requests regarding the naming or renaming of transportation-related facilities. And so, staff recommends approval of this resolution as presented. I stand by for any questions.
Councilman Hernandez.
Can we actually name state highways as a city?
Renee Katures, Director at Public Works. Yes, we work with Tech Dot, we can work with Tech Dot on renaming of facilities that are state-owned and maintained. Not maintained, but state-owned facilities.
Like, I mean, do we have that? Is there, is that in the city existing already?
No, that's what this policy is for, to allow us to coordinate with Tech Dot to do that.
Could they just tell us no?
They can, I guess.
So, it's just a recommendation to Tech Dot for naming of a particular road, or segment of highway, or something?
To include it in our policy. Right now, our policy only addresses, I think, the renaming of streets, but not a facility that is on a Tech Dot transportation system.
Okay, so this is just a recommendation done, that would come to council from the Transportation Committee, that we would recommend to Tech Dot, and then Tech Dot would tell us yes or no?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Councilman Suckley.
Thank you, Mayor. Ernie and team, I appreciate y'all doing this. This, this initiated with some folks on the island reaching out to me to inquire whether this was a possibility, and obviously, this isn't, we aren't here today to consider the, the specific name we're talking about, but it's someone y'all are all very familiar with, and it's a name related to his family. And so, I think it would be really nice for us to be able to do that, since he was key and instrumental in getting the Water Exchange Bridge to become a reality. And as we can all see what's happening on the island now, it's, it was the linchpin for all that stuff happening out there. So, anyways, I appreciate all y'all's work on this.
Yes.
Councilman Pusley.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, Ernie, would this apply, we have many examples where the city has...
where the city has annexed county roads, but they still go by the county road name. So, are we allowed to change those if we want to, or does this policy implement that as well?
I think the question you're asking is in council policy number seven, that allows for an unnamed street that's a county road to be renamed, the council has that opportunity to exercise that option.
Okay, okay, very good, thank you.
Aye, my motion to approve.
Okay.
We're gonna name one after you when you leave. I'm gonna go ahead, we have a motion in a second, but I'm gonna ask for public comment, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on item number 28? Yeah. Manuel, this is your, you make an entrance. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number 29, a resolution amending the financial budgetary policies adopted by Resolution 033082 on June 27th of 2023.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Eddie Houlihan with the Office of Management and Budget. 29 is a resolution amending the financial budgetary policies. Back in June, the council did amend the policies, and they were adopted in June 27th. Today, we're bringing back an additional section for amendment for your council consideration. And it's, we'd be adding section 19, as displayed, at capital improvement, future bond, design funding. And it's to ha, to have more accurate cost estimates for CIP GO bond projects, and to lessen the impact from manual inflation, design of a project can be considered in one bond election, with the construction to be considered in the subsequent bond election. This would require planning for at least four years, and if the project can be designed and constructed in less than two years, then both should be included in one bond election. And I'll stand by if you have any questions on this particular item.
Councilman Hernandez.
Maybe this, this is a question for, for Miles, in terms of language. The original language of this, where the section where it said "Design of the project can be considered in one election and constructed, to be considered in the subsequent election." The original language I had in there, it said the project should be as, as a direction, not necessarily, not shall be, but should be. But in terms of can be, it seems like it's a lesser standard, to where it's, it can be ignored if, and maybe just kind, give me your legal opinion on the, on what is the best use of that verbiage? Whether it should be can be, should be, or should be?
The, well, keep in mind that this is a, this is a, essentially always going to be a suggestion to staff, whether you have can or must, since we have a city manager type, type of government, the, the type of, the staff are always going to be carrying that out, and that's always going to be an optional direction, whether or not it is can be, or, or, or should be.
Well, the reason I say, I say that is because it's, in terms of can be, it's more the, more of a suggestion, as opposed should be, it should be more the standard, as opposed to shall, which is, would be absolute, which is not what I wanted or intended. So the idea was to try and have a, a mechanism to plan over a four-year period, so we can have more accurate estimates on cost, so we don't have the kind of cost overruns, and we're not taking three years from the time it's, the, from the time of the election. And we've had some very successful aspects of, of this being the case. I can give you the example for the pool, where it was relatively, you know, where the ground's already broken on it, it's, it's, what, less than six months from the election? So, and plus, we had a more accurate cost estimate, because it was, we had a full design. So, I, I think, an aspect, and I have to agree with, as much as I hate to say this, with, with Councilman Barreda in terms of a management problem. But, I mean, this is, this is, I think, is a, you know, take it to heart, I mean, I, I would recommend, I would recommend it, say should be, but I'd be willing to try it out with can be, to see if it, if it really works. And see if we can do this, but I, you know, is there a real difference between can be and should be, is what I'm asking?
Well, I think.
Keep in mind, there may be some unintentional consequences from a more, from, from pushing the mandate to be more restrictive on, on staff.
I'm not asking for shall. It's not shall, it's should.
Well, I think that the point is, is that you want this considered, and can be does that, and, and I think there are pros to con, pros and cons. I think you, you have a good point, in the sense of, you know, the construction side of it, and the cost. You know, on the flip side, and, and, and we don't have to, again, to me, can be, it incorporates, right, what you're trying to have considered, have considered. You know, what I don't ever want to see happen is, you spend a million dollars on design, that passes, that goes to the voters, it passes, and then two years later, you come back with the construction, and it's a different council, or it doesn't pass for some reason, then you've got the, you've got two projects. One, a waste, I mean, and I'm just hypothetically thinking of, you know, every scenario. Flip side to that is, you have your actual construction costs, you don't go for COs. But what if it doesn't pass? The construction side of it. Anyway, that said, I support this, but I do support it with can be considered, because then it's a conversation that any council is going to have at the dais.
Yeah, the, the can be is,
Or discussion.
Like I said, the can be is, is a softer language, and it's more of, it, like I said, it's more of a, it's a suggestion as opposed to kind of a direction. I did, I am glad that you changed the, the construction from four years to two years, which makes a lot more sense. The, you know, I, I think this is a very good option for us to, COs aside, that's, that's not necessarily the, the main issue here. It's about making sure you have better estimates on the cost of these things, and so we, and then we go right into construction. And this will help us, because a lot of times we'll go through these bond elections, and, and we wait three years for something to happen, and then we're getting beat up, like, when is this gonna happen, when is this gonna happen, right? I think this is a, this is a good thing, so I, I will give it the shot with can be. I think it should be a little bit stronger, but I will give, I'll, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt. Maybe, maybe we can prove Councilman Barreda wrong on a management issue.
Councilman Presley.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, I've only been here for one bond vote, and that was the one we did last year, but I will tell you guys from the outside looking in, that one of the things the city has been criticized over and over again is getting bonds approved in, and I'll just use this year as an example, in 2018, and here we are, 2023, and we haven't spent any of the money, and I know Peter has, you've worked very hard to change that, and to your credit, and to make sure we get these projects onboard and going faster than we've done in the past. So it's a criticism that, that the voters have leveled upon us, and we're very lucky that they even vote to approve some of these bonds, with the criticism the city has received in the past. So I thought this was maybe a good ideal, to try to, you know, shorten that process up, but I do understand the mayor's concern, and I, and when I first read this, before I even talked to anybody, I, it jumped out at me, I said, well, you know, what if we approve doing all the engineering and architectural and whatever goes into it? And then, two years later, the council's changed, the administration's changed, and the current council says, well, that's not a very good idea, let's do something else, then all that money, time, and effort is down the drain. And the taxpayers have paid for that. So, I think this is something we can try, but the goal here that Councilman Hernandez is headed toward, and I fully support, is we have to figure out how to get from point A to point B faster. And these bonds projects, we've got to figure out how to get them out the door faster. So, and, and I've said that before, about everything we do here at the city, is, we got to do it faster.
And Peter, you have, I mean, I know we have moved along, because that was an issue with, you know, in the past.
So if we take just the last two bond programs, the 2020 bond program, more, more than half, probably at this point, three quarters of the projects, either one complete, or two under construction, and the remaining one quarter are headed towards construction, that's the 2020, so that's just, yeah. Right, and then the 2022 bond program, as Councilman Hernandez just alluded to, the swimming pool, a $10 million facility is already under construction. This thing was just approved by the voters in November.
Right.
So, and we have other projects that are under construction, all, all the road projects are, have a contract for design, approved by the council five months after the vote. Those are all part of the processes that this council has endorsed, the mass selection.
But the pool was designed, was on bond for design in 2020,
Right.
and the construction was in 2022, so that's the model I was looking at.
Right.
And it's specifically like on, for road construction.
Right.
I've yet to see a road construction project not pass bond, right?
Right, yeah, they had high approval rates.
You know, when you're looking forward, kind of looking at these things, you look at the projects that need to be done, that, you know, that you know that are gonna, I believe, will pass. I mean, I, like I said.
Yeah, you can take like Everhart as an example, similar, it was designed in 2020, a portion of it, and it's under construction with the funds in 2022.
There was also a portion of that in 2018, too, right?
Right, right, and that, we know those are the, not to use that word, but those are the kind of leftover projects and bond program, but we're working to get that. The goal is to close out 2018, most of the works now under construction, there's a few North Beach projects because of the bridge, but.
So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, any further discussion, Councilman Roy?
No, I, I just wanted to say, you know, earlier, I can't remember who I was talking to, but we were talking about risk, you know, overall, you know, the risks that we take sometimes. And, and this particular case, you know, I, I think it's, it's prudent, because that's the number one thing that I hear from constituents all the time, is the amount of time that it takes to get things done, and they're always, unfortunately, people just have the idea that, okay, you just voted on that, it should be done in three weeks. And, and I, I really feel like this council, one of the things that we have stepped up as a council is to look at issues like this, and especially with the guidance that Peter's given us, to be able to move these things along. I, I realize it's a risk, but I think it's a risk, and, and most of the time, worth taking. Because we, we have the ability, because nothing happens when we delay projects, there's always a cost. And I wish that I could say that the economy's looking robust, and that there's gonna be some things in the future that indicate that we will, you know, as we curb inflation, that we'll be in a different position, but it's not. I mean, we just heard yesterday that the feds are continuing to look at raising rates, and we're gonna continue to go toward a recession, whether we like it or not. And cost is important, and when, just like the water garden, when we wait three or four years,
Right.
it costs us more money. So I, I just appreciate this council even thinking about that, and city staff putting things in place.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, I'm gonna go ahead and open public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on item number 29? Okay, there being no one, we'll close public comment, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Okay, with that, there being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.